Excellent. Good evening, everyone. We're calling tonight's Committee of the Whole to order. So, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. As is our practice, the Deputy Mayor gets the opportunity to chair the Committee of the Whole meeting. So, I think this is my second round of chairing these meetings and look forward to the next couple of rounds of them. Just as a reminder to some folks that the Committee of the Whole meetings are meant as opportunities to inform council and gather some information. These are not decision-making meetings. So, with that, though, I am going to call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM and I get to bang the gavel. Moving on to Item 2A, the adoption of the agenda. We do want to note that Item 5A is being removed from the agenda and will be deferred to another meeting, I believe, next month. With that, then, I would like to ask for a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Our apologies, it's 5H, not 5A. That is being removed tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, 5H. Thank you. I thought I said 5H, but that's all right. Sorry, the motion to accept the agenda as amended, Councilor Flowers.
I will move to accept the agenda as amended.
All those in favor? It's approved unanimously. Excellent. Moving on to the adoption of the previous minutes. And so, if we can ask for a minute to adopt the minutes of April 2nd, 2024, Committee of the Whole as attached. Council Reed.
I'll move the adoption of the April 2nd minutes for approval.
Excellent. Thank you. All those in favor? It's approved unanimously. Thank you very much. And so, we have no delegations tonight. So, moving on to Item 5A. In our Business Bylaw 01-2024, we're looking for an update on the South Bowe Landing Land Use Amendment. And we'd like to invite Mrs. Joelle Anna Karakol, our Planner 2, to present.
All right. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, and Members of Council. This evening, I am here to present Bylaw 01-2024 for discussion, which is a proposed land use amendment in South Bowe Landing. This application is for a land use amendment to Land Use Bylaw 01-2022. If approved, this will go on to inform decisions at the subdivision, development permit, and building permit stages. As noted, this application is for parcels located in the community of South Bowe Landing, which is shown here at the south end of town. The community of South Bowe Landing was included in the River Heights Area Structure Plan approved in 2011 and further planned through the South Bowe Landing Neighborhood Plan, which was approved in 2015. The majority of the community was assigned land use, in line with the neighborhood plan in 2017, with the exception of three parcels of land, which we will be speaking to tonight. Qualico Communities acquired the lands in 2022 and is now pursuing land use in line with the approved neighborhood plan as a next step before future development continues. Bylaw 01-2024 relates to three parcels located in the north end of South Bowe Landing, which have been labeled Parcel A, B, and C for the purpose of this application. All three parcels still have urban holding zoning, shown on blue in this map, being that they were not included in the 2017 land use redesignation. The land use map from the 2015 South Bowe Landing Neighborhood Plan shows all three of the subject parcels as RM, or the multi-unit dwelling district, which was the highest-density district in our old land use bylaw and is now the high-density residential district in our new land use bylaw. These areas were always intended for high-density housing and were planned to be so because of their proximity to the planned commercial area in the Village Center, the planned school site, and a future planned transit hub. These high-density parcels were intended to contribute to the mix of housing alternatives within the community and were purposefully located to be in walking distance to services and amenities. The application for this land use redesignation was originally submitted in August of 2023, wherein the application proposed rezoning all three of the subject parcels to high-density residential in line with the neighborhood plan. That application went forward to the Committee of the Whole in October of 2023 for information. The applicant held a public open house for community members on November 15th, 2023, to gather additional public feedback on the application ahead of further council meetings. In response to concerns around building height and density received at Committee of the Whole and the open house, the applicant amended the application so that Parcel B, which is adjacent to the most existing residences in the Willows, was proposed as medium-density rather than high-density. The application went for first reading on January 8th of this year and then for a public hearing that spanned two nights on January 22nd and February 5th, where additional concerns were heard from the community and led to further changes to the application that we will be speaking to tonight. Feedback received from the public at the public hearing included concerns overshadowing on existing properties in the Willows, increased traffic on River Heights Drive, obstructed views, a lack of town infrastructure, including schools and transportation options, multi-unit dwellings not aligning with the small-town feel of Cochrane, a perceived impact on property values, perceived decrease of sense of privacy with new residents adjacent to existing, and an increase in prime with populations in a multi-unit building. In response to the comments received at the public hearing, the applicant has further amended their application and is now proposing a direct-control district be created and applied to the three parcels to help address concerns heard. The South Bowe Landing Direct Control District would be titled DCO3 and will specify development regulations for each of the three parcels separately to respond to the unique conditions of each. The purpose of the South Bowe Landing Direct Control District is to provide for medium-to-high-density multi-unit dwellings compatible with both low-density and high-density adjacent districts as envisioned in the South Bowe Landing Neighborhood Plan. The uses for the district are the exact same that apply to the existing residential high-density districts, including multi-unit dwellings as a permitted use and supporting residential uses. Parcel A is the parcel located farthest west and is directly adjacent to approximately six properties at the south end of the Willows. DCO3 is proposing that Parcel A have the exact same regulations from the existing residential high-density district with additional restrictions added for building height. The district outlines three setback areas that will apply to Parcel A, shown on the diagram on the center here, with different maximum heights for each. From the north property line to six meters into the parcel, there will be no buildings permitted. From 6.1 meters to 20 meters into the parcel, the maximum building height will be 13 meters, which is the maximum building height of the RMX Zone, which is the zone already applied to all of the existing residences at the south end of the Willows. From 20 meters onwards, the maximum height would be 25 meters, which is the maximum height that already exists in the residential high-density district. The district also imposes a maximum six-story limit for the entirety of Parcel A. These regulations will help ensure that maximum building height is concentrated towards James Walker Trail to the south and away from existing residences in the Willows and also provide certainty on the maximum number of stories that can be constructed. Locating height further from the existing residences will also help the impact of shadows on existing homes throughout the year and help reduce potential impacts on privacy to the existing residents. Parcel B is the center parcel located next to the largest number of existing homes in the Willows. The regulations for Parcel B are the same as the existing medium-density district, except for an existing regulation which stipulates that any dwellings located immediately adjacent to existing residential lands located in the Willows shall have a maximum building height of 13 meters, where the maximum building height in the medium-density district is normally 15 meters. This matches the maximum height for the existing lots in the Willows and creates more continuity through the interface between the two neighborhoods. Parcel C is the parcel located farthest east and is located southeast of the Riversong Community, but it is not immediately adjacent to any existing residential development. This parcel was proposed as high-density residential through the previous iteration of this application. However, through the new direct-control district, it's being proposed as medium-density. Parcel C would have all of the same development regulations as the existing medium-density district with a maximum density of 95 units per hectare and a maximum building height of 15 meters. This will help ensure that there are no effects of shadowing on existing properties in Riversong and leave the highest-density properties further west surrounding the planned commercial areas. The only thing which differentiates the regulations applied to this parcel from the existing medium-density district is that there is no minimum density applied to it. This will allow greater flexibility in the types and mix of housing provided on the site. As one of the concerns reiterated through the public hearing process was shadowing on existing residences, the applicant prepared conceptual shadow studies which were shown at the public hearing and which we would like to present again to provide context on the issue. We do want to note that because there are no formal building plans submitted at this point, this modeling is only conceptual and based on current concepts for the site. The modeling does not reflect the building heights and setbacks updated through the DC and shows all buildings at the previous maximum heights as more detailed studies would not be required until the development permit stage, but does reflect similar outcomes. This slide shows effects of shadowing in March, in the morning, midday, and evening, and there are no shadows caused by the multifamily site on existing residences. Similarly, in June, there is no shadowing caused by the potential development on Parcel A. The modeling from October also shows little to no impact of shadowing throughout the day. December 21st represents the time of the year where the largest shadow impacts are experienced on all properties in town. The modeling shows that the largest impact is in the span of approximately 1:00 PM to 4:30 PM when the sun sets, which would result in a maximum of three to four hours of shadowing. As 4:00 PM is the time of greatest impact modeled during daytime hours, we also provided a comparison of this timeframe throughout the year, where, again, the worst shadow impacts are seen as we reach December. To summarize, the modeling indicates little to no impact of shadowing except for approximately a three-to-five-hour interval in the winter season. Administration is in support of the creation of a direct-control district for these three parcels. The land use bylaw requires that a direct-control district only be used for those sites with unique characteristics, unusual site constraints, or innovative design that require specific considerations that are unavailable under any other land use districts. It is the opinion of Administration that the previous approval processes, which left these three parcels without land use, along with the current inhabited homes directly adjacent to the lands and topography of the land, create unique needs which are unavailable in any of the existing districts. The use of a DC allows specific regulations to be applied to each of the three parcels to address concerns from current residents, while still meeting the intention of the original neighborhood plan, which was in place before adjacent homes in the Willows were built. The land use bylaw also establishes criteria that council must consider when deciding on an application for a direct-control district, including if the development is appropriate for the lands in line with previously approved policy or if it can be accommodated within an existing district. The changes being proposed through the direct-control district continue to meet the goals of the River Heights Area Structure Plan and South Bowe Landing Neighborhood Plan by providing diverse housing options and locating densities strategically within the community. From a planning perspective, the need for housing choices, especially smaller, high-density units, has increased. The Cochrane Sustainability Plan states that everyone should have a roof over their heads, which speaks to the continued need for diverse housing options in the community. Being that these areas are near transit corridors and a potential future transit hub in the Village Center, these future developments were purposefully planned to be connected to amenities and services in the neighborhood and the rest of town and provide options to current and future residents. We, again, wanted to summarize the process of this application, which has resulted in the second Committee of the Whole meeting. The applicant has responded to feedback provided at each stage of the process, resulting in the application before you this evening, which responds to concerns while still applying land use in line with previously approved council policy. Following this evening's meeting will be council's consideration of second and third reading at the regular council meeting on May 13th. And if approved, subdivision applications for Parcel A and B would follow in 2024 to 2025, followed by development and building permit applications estimated by the applicant to come forward in 2025. As phasing for the community is largely expected to take place from west to east, applications for Parcel C will still not be seen for a number of years. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to welcome any questions or comments.
Thank you very much for your presentation, Ms. Anna Karakol. You need to keep practicing your day, and one day I'll get it 100% right. I certainly appreciate it. I will then open up questions to my colleagues about your presentation. Council Reed.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I had a couple of questions. First of all, if you could, I think I understand what I'm hearing. The major difference is the previous proposal to the current one is that all three parcels are being moved to direct control and that they're subject to particular requirements for each parcel. A, as I understand it now, was broken into three subsections, with the third subsection accommodating a six-story height building. B now requires that it match the height requirements of the existing development to the north. And C is now moved to medium-density, which I think would suggest that it's like a four-story?
Through the chair, most of that was correct. I'm just gonna go to the summary here. So, for Parcel A, there are three setback areas.
Right.
The first, which is six meters from the north property line into the parcel, there are no buildings permitted. And then, from 6.1 meters to 20 meters into the parcel, so basically a 20-meter setback area, there can only be a maximum 13-meter building height.
Okay.
And then, beyond that 20-meter setback, the building height can be 25 meters, which is the normal maximum in the residential high-density.
Okay.
And then...
And if I understand it correctly, at this point at least, firstly, I'm not concerned about the density or shadowing. What concerns me is the topography, the difference between the current Willows or the area to the north and this land. I think council has an inherited responsibility to talk about the transition between communities, between the existing community and the adjacent one. And it doesn't seem to be that that issue, either that you identified it, which I think the public did, is being clearly addressed. So, if I understand it correctly, the Willow side of it and what would be on Parcels A and B is probably a 15 or 20, I'm now using feet, if apology, that's my age, at least that big a difference. How is that going to be addressed?
Through the chair, the changes being proposed in the direct-control district do help address the change in topography, but that does still exist. The lands are still going to be graded to an extent. There is a grading plan that's already been approved. And then, there are further mechanisms at the development permit stage that can further address that topography in the form of landscaping buffers or other buffering mechanisms. But the topography does still exist.
So, there's no plan to lower that height at all?
Through the chair, I believe some of the lands are lowered to an extent. It kind of varies along the width of James Walker Trail. I don't know if Drew has more.
Council Reed, I think one of the things that we could do is, when this comes back, is we could have more information on the existing grades versus the proposed grades based on the grading plan. So, again, I don't have all those details at my disposal this evening, but I understand your question. I've taken some notes, and we'd be happy to bring that back for clarity.
Okay. The other question I had is, if moving to direct control, if the developer then subsequently wishes to make a change, does that mean that it would not come back to council? They would not have to have a public engagement, and it would go to CPC? Is that kind of skirting the planning process issue?
Through the chair to Councilor Reed, the development authority stated within this direct-control district is either Administration or CPC, depending on the variances being requested. I believe changes can be made so that council can be a development authority within the district, but currently stated it is the development authority as Administration or CPC, as is already existing in the bylaw. So, it just depends on the variances being requested.
Yeah, that concerns me. I think this is an important enough development. Again, I support what you're trying to do in terms of direct control. I just worry that what that means for the general public and council in terms of being able to address any issues that might subsequently come up.
Council Reed, if I can just also answer on that question. If there are some fundamental changes to the bylaw, like they come in with a, based on what Ms. Anna Karakol was sharing, is if this were approved and they proceeded with a development permit, they would have to adhere to the direct-control bylaw. But I understand your question as if they wanted to amend that, it would require a public hearing because it is a land use matter. They would be making any, if they made a height adjustment or things of that nature, it would have to come back to council, and then that would require a public hearing.
Okay, so it would come back to public, or would go to public engagement and would come back to council?
Correct.
And the last two questions I have, and I'm sorry I'm taking so much time, is what's the status of the power line running across that property?
So, there is a realignment of the AltaLink line being proposed.
So, Council Reed, as proposed in the South Bowe Landing Neighborhood Plan, it is to be relocated, and the alignment is just to the west of this. So, yes, it is supposed to be realigned out of this, from this property. Because it will have impact. There's no question it bisects the property right now. So, again, that's something that we'll have some additional information before this comes back as well because in terms of the timing of the development permit and the timing of the relocation of the power lines, I think those are two critical pieces of information for council.
So, that would have to occur before the development permit would be issued?
Well, otherwise, the development permit, it's going to have to adhere for the power lines that are there. So, I think that would have impacts on the development permit.
Right, yeah, because it crosses A and B for sure.
Yes.
And the last question I have was about James Walker Trail. So, what are the applications for residents who would live in that area? Is that this road will be complete?
Through the chair, Councilor Reed, I am happy to share that we had just entered into a memorandum of understanding with the developer for working on James Walker Trail with the objective of completing James Walker Trail by the end of 2025. Fairly recent news. We just completed that earlier today.
Totally complete.
That is the intent. And it's still subject to, of course, the site servicing agreement that would happen at the subdivision phase. But the memorandum of understanding between us and the developer on this is to work towards the objective of completion by the end of 2025.
Thank you.
Excellent. Councilor Nagel, over to you.
Yeah, thanks. So, I'm not in favor of... So, I'm not in favor of any apartments in the area, but I'm curious with a question with the neighborhood plan that was approved previously with the old land use bylaw. What was the maximum permitted use apartment prior to the land use bylaw changing? It was four stories?
Through the chair, the previous land use bylaw did allow for up to 25 meters. However, up to 20, there was a range that required CPC approval. Being that multi-unit dwellings were a permitted use, the outcome would likely be the same as if the development met all of the other regulations within the land use bylaw. It just added a bit of time to the application process, but it still did allow for the same maximum height as the current land use bylaw. We just eliminated that CPC piece.
And is that because it was, four stories were permitted, but anything beyond four stories was discretionary?
Yes, I'm struggling to recall.
No, and Ms. Anna Karakol is correct. It was actually five stories was the maximum, Councilor Nagel. So, that was changed when we were doing the downtown site on the Old Town Hall site, as you may recall. So, however, discretionary was to go up to eight stories, which would permit, and it would have to go to CPC. So, there was a path in the past for this. And I think the important thing, it was always anticipated that these sites were high-density and anticipated to have high-density development on them when this was approved in 2015.
Yeah, I was just clarifying, though, that what was previously approved in the neighborhood plan, the permitted portion, was slower than six stories.
Permitted versus discretionary, yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. My apologies, Councilor Fideko. You actually had your light on first, and it was my error. So, over to you.
Yeah, I think I was supposed to go first, but it's great. Anyways, I have a couple of questions. Will there be a public hearing for the reaction to the changes that are coming forward now? Or is there going to be no further public hearing?
Through the chair to Councilor Fideko, no, the intended next step is to go forward to second and third hearing, being that we did already have a public hearing for the application and that the intent of the application hasn't changed, just additional restrictions have been added on to it in response to what was heard.
Yeah, I've spent the afternoon kind of trying to dig back into the history of this proposal because back then I was a news reporter, not on council. So, I couldn't necessarily find the articles that I needed, but I did pull up one, which I just wanted to kind of go back to because some of our further council members were on this council at the time. There is a really growing concern in Cochrane that we are developing too fast and too many homes. People in this town are not opposed to new residents, but they're opposed to new residents with a solid plan that gives the infrastructure to support some of these neighborhoods. I go back to some of our council members that were on that particular council, and I look at some of them today because I don't know exactly if something has changed. I've heard that they were always high-density from my memory. I remember Council McFadden suggesting that these three parcels were going to be held off because we didn't need to approve the entire land mass at that particular time. Now, that's my take back from council in like 2016, 17. And it's tough for me to remember because there's no live streams at that point. But I have some real concerns that they weren't necessarily the high-density of what they are proposed to be as of today versus what they were of yesterday. I don't even know if they're proposed to be high-density at this point. And so, I just have a couple of concerns that I'd like to look into deeper as to what was actually proposed back then from being proposed from our fellow councilmates. And so, maybe they could step in if they remember any more information than what I do at this point.
Deputy Mayor, I'm happy to respond as I was here during that whole period. So, Council Fideko, the neighborhood plan was approved in 2015. The land use subsequently came forward. These three parcels were left out. That was part of the discussion. Administration had actually recommended to council to not proceed with all the land use for South Bowe Landing to actually restrict. And, you know, our concern was circumstances change. The development of the community was not going to progress. Certainly, here we are almost 10 years later, and we're just talking about the first phases of this community moving forward. However, at the time, council did not proceed with these three redesignations. That's not to say that they were not considered for high-density. That was always the intent. Council just, in their decision, decided to defer that to a later date, and here we are.
Absolutely. I appreciate your opinion, Mr. Hyman, because that is the way that I remember that conversation. I do remember that Administration was not in favor of pursuing the whole entire land development at that time. It was actually discouraged, even from that developer at the time. They didn't actually suggest that we proceed with everything. But it was proceeded. I just, I go back to look at the people who bought, and this is my concern, that you bought a home in that particular area. And if it wasn't actually suggested, or if you were in the know that there was going to be a 25-meter apartment building behind you, that is my concern of where this all ends, is that it's one thing if you knew that that was the proposed development behind you, but if it wasn't... but if it wasn't, I can't support something that would be. And I realize this is not the meaning to portray an opinion, but at that point it becomes very difficult to accept the fact that we have people who bought there who didn't know what was coming. And I appreciate, I don't blame anybody for what was discussed, but I think it was part of council's discussion, I believe it was part of administration's discussion. I just wish we could go back to kind of figure out what's the best path forward and I don't believe that it's not apples to apples at this point, in my opinion anyways. And so I'll leave it there.
And Counselor McFadden, that's why, or excuse me, Fideko, that's why we're, the developer has proposed the direct control to add added regulations and restrictions to address the concerns that were brought forward, so.
So just for, before I pass the mic, I'll just speak to that because I was on the council of the day. And yeah, to my recollection, when that was passed, the neighborhood plan did call for these sites were always identified as the highest density of the time that we had. Overall, the site was being designed to support the success of the neighborhood commercial because we really did want to drive commercial walkability in that area. So it was always meant to be high density there. So if you looked, I think it was the neighborhood plans, you would have seen that at the time. At the next level of discussions, when we got into the subdivision level, that's where I was on the winning side of that discussion that time. Because I would have preferred that the land use be rather staged out so that we could kind of learn and adapt. It is a significant parcel of land. That discussion went through and again, I wasn't on the winning side of that discussion that day. But the end result is that we are here at this point and we're dealing with that decision. But again, I think if you looked at the neighborhood plan, it is consistent with the theme of high density being there with the goal to support, you know, the commercial in the area, the school, all of those things to be located together. So it is consistent from that end through my lens and recollections. So with that, I will pass it over to Counsel Wilson.
Okay, thank you. I just had one more clarity question about, I appreciate that there's been updates to the proposals since the public hearing. If I understand correctly, only Site A remains to have the 25-meter sixth floor. Is that correct? The other two have been amended to lower heights?
Through the Chair to Counselor Wilson, that is correct. So Parcel A in the west is the only that has the base of high-density zoning. B and C both have the base of medium-density zoning with added height restrictions for this parcel in the middle next to the existing residences.
Okay, great, thank you. And so my only question was about setbacks. Have the setbacks changed at all from the original proposal? That's my additional question.
Through the Chair to Counselor Wilson, only for Parcel A, the setback areas just pertain to those different heights.
Right.
For Parcel B and Parcel C, the setbacks have not changed. Just the maximum height for the adjacent residences in Parcel B located right here again.
Thank you for that. And in particular then, the beginning setback to the start of Parcel A, is that, was that six meters, I think I read? Was that always six meters? Did that change or is that the same as before?
Through the Chair, that's correct. So that's just the regular setback area within the land use bylaw.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Counselor Flowers.
My question was around direct controls. Would this be the first project that we've ever looked at doing direct control if we approve it?
Through the Chair to Counselor Flowers, we have two existing direct controls within the land use bylaw. So this would be the third. The first was included when we first drafted the land use bylaw for the Baptist Seminary lands just because there was such a varying array of uses when it was brought into the town. That was just the best solution as it didn't fit into any of our existing districts. And then there was recently another direct control district created for a specific parcel located on Railway Street, I believe. As, yeah, a use was added to that district.
I was just reading about it because I was wondering, do we have more control or less control? If we go with direct control and they talked about exceptional ideas and innovative design, would there still be room for that?
Through the Chair to Counselor Flowers, there is definitely room for innovative design. All of the specific site design features are determined at the development permit stage, if that's kind of what you're speaking to. Again, we are just at the land use stage right now, so this is just applying the land use regulations that will apply to that development process going forward. But there's definitely still a lot of room for innovation in site design.
I keep forgetting about that, the stage we're at in the town, I get ahead of myself. But we would still have lots of controls and we could make it so that the council hears again about the changes or gets involved with it.
Through the Chair.
Yeah, Counselor Flowers, what would happen is we would provide updates through our regular updates. But again, if you remember the planning hierarchy that Mr. Krasinski and his team has been so good about sharing. Again, council's decision-making is at the land use and that's this. And then we would go subdivision is administrative and development permits administrative. However, you would receive updates as you regularly do, but it wouldn't be anything beyond that.
Thank you.
Mayor Junong?
Yeah, thank you. Further to that point, just a question on direct control. If anything, I guess the control comes from the council bench perspective on the, exactly what you've outlined today on heights, setbacks, uses, maximum density, number of units or dwellings. And if any of those parameters were to shift, and I think this is what I heard Mr. Heineman say earlier, then that decision has to come back to council. So council is the development authority on those particular parameters? Is that how I'm understanding this process?
Yes, if they wanted to change the land use bylaw, like the direct control to add different parameters, they would need to come back to council for that approval and it would require a public hearing process. And I believe that was Counselor Reed's question.
Yeah.
So again, you would be establishing the restrictions and regulations in the bylaw and then ultimately if it were approved, then it's administration's duty to receive a development permit and work within those regulations. For some reason, if it doesn't fit those regulations and the owner or the future developer requires the change, they would come back.
To this body.
Correct.
Okay, I just, and then there's the discretionary points or the flex that's allowed inside a regular development permit that would still sit with administration. Okay, but the general high-level areas that we're talking about are council's. So thank you for that. The second point I'd like to make and most of my, well, all of my questions were asked, but there's one that I would like when we discuss this at second reading. If you could bring this particular chart back in a more visual representation. You did so in the shadow presentation there. But I would just like to see like a block, you know, I think we can keep it simple of just a block. It doesn't have to be a particular style of home or building because we don't know what that's going to be yet. But you're understanding what I'm asking? Just like a side view of what it is exactly proposed, so we're really clear.
Like an elevation?
Yeah, yeah. Just be nicer to understand. I'm sure there's a lot of people in the public that have questions about what does that mean and what does it look like from the side, like hardscape?
For sure.
Thank you.
Okay, that looks like that's all the questions from my colleagues. A good presentation, my colleagues actually covered off a number of the questions I did. I do have one though on process and around the public hearing piece. I do applaud the developer in responding to the public hearing and the two days of residents getting up and sharing their concerns and their thoughts, which is highly valued. But, and so what we've seen here though, what I appreciate is a significant change, of course, changing this to direct control. We only have three of those in our municipality. And so I would actually be more in favor of having a second public hearing to get the public response to this change. Is there not a way to make that part of our process? Because I know once this is, you know, going to be in the public realm, this is going to be something that the community is going to want to comment on. And I think I'd really like to find a method in which we can enable that to happen.
Deputy Mayor McFadden, you know, I wish my colleague Ms. Lowe was here. She's much more of an expert in this than myself or certainly Ms. Knight. However, the spirit and intent of what the public hearing, it hasn't changed substantially. I appreciate you used those words. I understand your desire to potentially have a second public hearing, but it is not required as part of this process. That was something that certainly Ms. Lowe and Ms. Knight commented on previously as we were proceeding through the consideration of the direct control bylaw. So unfortunately, I'm probably not articulating that as well as they would, but again, I don't think that it's procedural fairness is necessarily being adhered to if we had a, another public hearing.
Yeah, because just as a kind of a refresher, is once the public hearing is closed, council can receive no more information on that, which I think is really difficult in this piece because I think our residents who are concerned are going to want to be able to share their responses to the changes. So I guess I am just struggling with the response, but I guess we will leave that there today. Any follow-up questions, Counsel Reed?
Just picking up on that, is it still possible, Drew, for the public to contact members of council in regards to their, if they have any concerns about this direct control? Not that we're opening soliciting, not as an open...
And I appreciate there's a number of people here tonight who are quite interested and this has material impact on people. So again, the public hearing is closed. We really consider this as an administrative matter at this point. So again, I would take this back and certainly administratively we can explore that. But I would caution about soliciting extra information based on the direct control bylaw at this point.
Fair enough, yeah, and I wasn't openly soliciting. But I would suggest that if there are members of the public who had concerns, possibly they could contact members of council, indicate those concerns and members of council could then perhaps raise those on residents' behalf. The other question I had, just picking up on what Mayor Junong was suggesting, is it possible to get a, we had in a presentation, I think in the Heritage Hills, I might forget what that subdivision was called, but anyways, that development, there was a perspective from the current residence position to the new development. I'm wondering if you could, if there's some way to graphically represent what a development would look like in Parcel A and B from a, from the Willow's perspective, looking south to that development, how it actually would physically look from their, from their backyards or decks? Is that, is that something we can do or can have done?
Through the Chair, yeah, we can work with the applicant to see if we can get a cross-section prepared to more graphically show what that will look like for existing residents.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Fideko?
I would absolutely encourage the public to engage with council. There's been a change to the entire concept here of moving into direct control of what that looks like. There's been changes to the plan. It's one thing to not allow public consultation on the same plan, but when a plan has changed, I believe it's only our opportunity as council members to hear those concerns. Whether or not it occurs in a public hearing or not, I would be really, I would be, I don't even know what the word that I'd use, I need to be careful the word that I use. Be horrified that the fact that council doesn't hear those concerns as to what the public is actually thinking once a change has come to a plan. I think that is our job. Our job is to hear the information, to collect all the information, whether or not we agree with the developer, we agree with the administration or we agree with the public at large. It's our job as council members to figure out the best plan forward for our community. And I'm sorry, I would absolutely disagree that we don't allow further engagement. Doesn't mean we have to have a public hearing. But you want to email me your concerns? Absolutely, I think that should be heard. That's my job as an elected official of this town.
Thank you, Counselor Fideko. Counselor Nagel?
I certainly don't think public engagement is a bad thing. On this particular item, I don't feel like I need to hear from the public because I know that the people who spoke, their opinion probably didn't change. They don't want high-density development behind them. And I don't think we need to get 400 more people out here to tell us that. I think their message was loud and clear. So I wouldn't even need another public hearing to know how all those people feel.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, thank you, team. I think that's all the questions we have for you tonight, so thank you for your presentation. And we will see you again. Next up on our items of business, item 5B. We are looking at the Highway 22 to River View Siphon project update. Mr. Drew Heineman, our Executive Director of Development and Infrastructure Services.
Thank you, Lee. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and members of council. I'm here to provide you an update on the Highway 22 to River View Siphon. If you recall, at April 2nd, Committee of the Whole, Ms. Dela Cruz brought a capital projects update. At that time, there was a reference to this project and we were working to clarify some of the details. Those details are in the report before you, which I will provide some additional information. Again, we're not looking for a decision this evening, but felt it was important to bring this information to council for your review and to answer any questions. So in terms of project background, I think everyone's familiar with this project. And the plant twinning was in 2028, but advanced in after a 2018 condition assessment that showed that the line was only flowing at 30% capacity. Council had previously approved $6.67 million in budget for construction planned in October of 2023 and then could be completed this summer. Just in terms of the detail, there are two aspects to it. There is the trenchless install, which is the directional drill and then a trench install, open cut. So, and then there's the existing siphon as well as the proposed new. So the existing siphon is in the dashed white with the new sanitary siphon. Here is the location of the directional drill as well as over here at Big Hill Creek. So again, as I mentioned, $6.67 million, that is off-site levy funded. And you may recall there was also the installation of a new manhole and flush of the existing manhole, which was $400,000 and it was funded through the operational reserve. So the project was initiated in October and to date, a significant portion of this has been completed. However, during construction, there were additional construction costs and that were incurred. Some were the additional hydrobacking, obviously after the wastewater incident this fall or this past fall, additional hydrobacking at Big Hill Creek and across Highway 22 were done to mitigate any of the risks. There was some additional length in the HDD length was, or the crossing. And then there were some sound attenuation barriers that were also put up based on some of the feedback that we got from the adjacent community. You may recall, there were some residents in particular who endured a number of nights and provided us with some significant feedback. So as I'm sure you're questioning, the focus of this is the additional $700,000 in additional budget required. And your questions are likely related to why. Specifically, $465,000 or 66% of the request is for additional pipe material, parts and labor to connect the new pipe to existing. So when we went and uncovered some of the existing sections of the pipe, it was different than the records that we had, which has necessitated us to order additional materials. And then there are also some different connections and specific pipe materials as well as components such as adapters, couplers that are needed, as well as additional welding and labor that was previously not anticipated. There's also $130,000 and 19% of the request is additional park and surface restoration. So this is particularly in the area adjacent to the, to this area that in terms of the material, when the earth was removed, it is quite, it's got a lot of clay material and rocks. And in terms of the final plan to restore that area and bring in loam and the appropriate material, we needed the additional budget for that. And then certainly there's a portion, 15% for contingency, which brings us to the $700,000 total. Again, trying to bring this to you... Again, um, trying to bring this to you to uh help answer any questions, provide some more clarity. And then we would be back on uh April twenty-second um to uh request your decision on this matter. So propose next steps. Again, uh, we would be uh looking for this budget adjustment on April twenty-second. Um, and this is funded through the wastewater capital reserve. It's currently at ten point six million dollars. So it would be the balance of the reserve if council were to support this would be just under nine point nine million dollars. And then following the potential approval and additional budget requests, the project would be completed by this summer. Uh, that concludes my presentation. Thank you. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, uh, Mr. Heineman, for your presentation. Um, turning over our first question to Counselor Fideko.
Uh, thank you for this. Um, I know I asked a few, I mean, I've asked, I think, a couple of times anyways and lasted a while. Uh, do we have an update as to kind of the galvanities around um our emergency that happened in October, November timeframe?
Uh, Counselor Fideko, that is a completely separate matter from this. I appreciate that Miss Lowe is not here. She is handling that file. Um, and uh, certainly this request is completely separate from that. So again, uh, that's would be my answer at this time unless Mr. Derikot wishes to add anything.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, I I would just simply add that we'd be happy to bring council update as Mr. Heineman suggested. That is being handled separately from the project itself and is an ongoing and active matter. Um, I don't believe there's been a significant disposition change. It's a quite a complicated file related to um the people involved, including um Alberta Environment, et cetera, given the proximity to um the waterway. And so there's a lot that has to be taken into account. Um, yeah, with the investigation and the subsequent processes. Uh, but happy to en- ensure that council gets an update when there's been a substantial change in that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, I just have seen over the past, uh, of maybe the past couple Committee of the Holes, that there's been a significant ounce of of costs uh coming forward to council for consideration, including the Glenbow Pathway, Jump Start, which hasn't been presented yet tonight, plus this project. I mean, we're, we're sitting at one point five million. Um, whether or not it's taken out of reserves or it's taken out of a magical fairy tree, it really doesn't matter to me. I mean, it's all money that costs taxpayers. It's come from taxpayers in some way. Um, I just, uh, and then we have possible litigation issues, which we don't know, and I realize this is not the place to discuss it, but all of it comes up to a big picture is to the affordability of of what actual our residents have to face going forward. And I think that's more my major concern right now because one offs don't sound terrible, but when you start to lump them all together, uh, my concern is that we're sitting at, you know, we're starting to set elevated numbers that I don't really know that we can afford or where that money is coming from, considering that I believe during the budget process, it was dictated by um our CFO at that point that our reserves are not necessarily overly healthy at that point. And also, I mean, are we going to get some budget adjustment numbers that need to be approved in order for the budget to actually come together? I think those are my major concerns, not necessarily just on this, but when you looked at the collective number of all the projects coming forward.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Reed, over to you.
Yeah, maybe just to pick up on that, I'd point out to my colleague that in paragraph two, it says that an additional budget request, which was initially funded through the Water Capital Reserve at a current balance of one point six million, that this fund will eventually be recovered through the twenty-two offsite levy. So that this is a good news story. Um, and not only is it a good news story, but it's a, it's a story that has to be dealt with anyway, so. Uh, but my question is around the contingency funds. Were, there were contingency funds for the original project. Were they used as part of this? Uh, number in terms of the original or is, are you using the same contingency funds and and just rolling it over?
No, uh, Counselor Reed, I think a very good question. Uh, the contingency uh funds that were within the original budget were utilized. That's where the additional hydrovacation. So any of the work that I'm asking for the seven hundred thousand dollars uh on April twenty-second is work that hasn't completed. However, we did complete some additional hydrovacation at those two locations that I previously mentioned. And that's where the contingency monies uh were utilized uh primarily in, within the exist, initial budget uh because we wanted to reduce any risk and uh obviously uh with uh our uh previous experience.
And Mr. Heineman, can you uh go back to the comment I had just made that these funds will eventually be covered off through the offsite levy collections? That is that this project pays, growth pays for growth, right, in this case?
Yes, you are correct that uh, again, um, I don't, it this will be recovered through the offsite levies as growth occurs. Again, we, the, the why I'm hesitating is I think it's important to recognize, and I've said this before, we, we do not like to be in this position where we're coming and requesting additional money from council. However, in this situation, based on the proposal that we have before you, we're confident that as growth proceeds, we will have this balance of the ten point six million dollars returned. It will be nine point nine. It will be returned to ten point six through growth. So we're confident in that. However, I just want to confirm, this is not an enviable position to be in, asking for seven hundred thousand dollars on a project.
Yeah, and I, I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, the has builts did not indicate what the size of pipe and created these problems as it is. This is a necessary piece of infrastructure that we need for our community and I'm, I'm totally happy when we come to support it, to support it, even though we're not voicing opinions tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Junong.
Yeah, I wanted to make the same point about the offsite levy, but I didn't want, I don't want it to be thought of as, oh, it's just offsite levy built, so it's whatever, it doesn't matter how much it costs. Um, and that's not, not what I'm hearing at all. Um, but to be clear, it is, um, and I don't, we don't need to go over it. Counselor Reed just asked, it was going to be my point as well, but um, I do have a question around um what choice do we have? And I don't mean our backs are to the wall and we have, but this is an important piece of infrastructure. We wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't. Um, but what choice do we have in um approving or, I mean, if council doesn't approve the amount, then where are we left with the project?
We will not be able to complete the project, uh, Mayor Junong. So, yeah, very good question and and that's something where again, uh, that's my hesitancy in answering Counselor Reed's question is this is not a situation, again, we are looking and I will give Ms. Dela Cruz a lot of credit, uh, working with uh different consultants. So we're staging our um, uh, capital projects differently moving forward so we can reduce risk as things are coming forward. Um, again, this is an extremely complex project. Uh, I undoubtedly appreciate the history. Uh, but uh, we need to get this project completed. It's critical for our community.
Yeah, thank you. That was what I thought the answer was going to be. Um, and we met about this, I think it was on our last agenda with the capital project update. There was a few questions around scoping and budgeting of projects, so um future, um, Mr. Heineman standing in front of coun, of future council, there will be a different process that will have gotten us to this point where hopefully we're early, we're avoiding these additional requests for funding.
That is absolutely the plan. Uh, we want to add additional rigor into the uh planning process for our capital projects and uh eliminate situations like this. Again, they will occur. Uh, I'm not going to say that they, uh, because there's always different circumstances, but uh, uh, again, um.
Taxes are not going up because of this increase in funding.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Nagel, over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, stuff like this is a little bit difficult to handle from a policy and council perspective. Um, just cuz a- as the mayor has indicated, um, you know, if we say, well, we're not gonna pay for this, well, then the project's just incomplete. And as Counselor Fideko has rightfully brought up, um, like, it's just not acceptable that we have all these huge overruns. Of course, one of the solutions that we could do in the future is just overestimate the cost of everything and then you'll never be an over budget. But then that creates another problem because then you have projects that are too expensive and a bunch of budgets that aren't spent, and this creates this incentive to blow these budgets because you've got them anyways. So I, I was just wondering, like, can you comment on the culture around how these issues are handled in our organization? Because I think the only real solution is to make sure that the, the middle managers and the boots on the ground that are dealing with these things understand that, like, it's not okay to have cost overages. There can't be this attitude, don't worry, council will just find the money. It, it, can you comment on the
Counselor Nagel, I can, I can assure you that that is not the prevailing sentiment within our organization. Uh, straight from uh Mr. Derikot, all the way down through ELT, there, and our managers. This is not, we are not a bank. We're not coming to council and continually asking for money and just over. And I do appreciate it, and Counselor Fideko made a very good point in terms of the pathway project, this project and the uh jump start, which is uh which is next. So you, you know, these are gonna be before you, but uh, in, I want to give council the confidence and the trust that our, our attitude is not that council will just approve this. We do not want to be in these situations.
Okay, so then as a counselor, I'll
If I may, I'm sorry, Counselor Nagel, uh, through the chair, just to, to add to that. I think one of the other elements, you identified a few risks associated with overestimating budgets, et cetera. The other concern that I think we try to balance in that is we don't want to end up with uh projects that cut corners of quality or service delivery or longevity of the project and put that part at risk as well. And so we try to balance that. And in this case, this is, I think, partly what you're hearing is instead of uh compromising what we need to be a fifty to seventy year piece of infrastructure by trying to maintain costs, we felt the better interest of the taxpayer was to come forward and make sure we could complete the appropriate repair that would ensure that infrastructure would be in place for the long term. Um, and so that balance is also a, a part of it is, are we achieving the actual result that council um, uh, sent us to do with the project? And we need to consider that when we come back in terms of funding adjustments as, as part of that. And I think in this case, that is borne out by the fact that when we learned about the different pipe uh materials in order to appropriately ensure a piece of infrastructure we were confident in, it required some additional funding.
Great. So I guess if I could just finalize my comments, just as a counselor, I, I don't see myself having any option here other than to support this, but I would also just request that it be communicated down that um, you know, these things can't be happening, these are a problem. And if it's a repeat occurrence in one person's office, then you know, something maybe needs to be discussed about more seriously with that. But other than that, I guess I have to support this, so. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, thank you very much, Counselor Reed.
Yeah, actually, two comments. One was actually what uh, Mr. Fideko just had indicated. And that is, you know, if we want to look back at the history, and this is just my own opinion, let me take a look at uh, projects that were, weren't appropriately budgeted. Take a look at Spry Lakes. We've spent a decade repairing the things that should have been taken care of originally down there. And then on a positive note, uh, Drew, maybe you could just run through all the projects that we have brought in on time and on budget, right? Uh, I think that list is pretty extensive and far outweighs the kind of negative comments that might be, the public might take from this discussion about projects going over in terms of budget. So we have the RCMP or Protective Services Building that came in on budget and on time. We have the bridge that was developed and built and in on time and on budget.
And James Walker Trail Extension as part of that bridge, so.
So I think there are a number of, you know, your planning department has done a great job in terms of some of the really positive projects we've done, and I wouldn't want this meeting or any of the public to leave this meeting thinking that isn't the case.
All right, uh, Counselor Fideko.
Yeah, my, my concerns were not the fact that the administration did a poor job. I just think that it, it comes down to being able to portray it and stand by it in a public sense, right? When you have three big numbers coming forward, which the public have identified as a gumbo trail, jump start, this one. In their eyes, it's one point five million dollars. It doesn't really matter how you shake it up or how you feel that how this number came to be. I understand the project needs to proceed. I'm not about to say that the project can't proceed and we're just not gonna do anything with it. That was never my concern. It's a fact that the public should be aware. And when it goes back um to conversations previous, uh, there have been numbers and you can't say growth pays for growth. We all realize that that's not necessarily always the case. That happens in our community. It's why we do the studies that we do. Um, the public needs to know what's coming up. They need to know how this is gonna affect them. Does it affect their taxes? Yes, it doesn't right now from this amount, but we tend to use money as in terms of surplus to put into reserves, which then makes us not applicable to a tax raise. It all rolls in. There's no magical tree of reserves that exists out there. I'm just pointing that out and I'm certainly not putting blame on anybody. It's just the fact that I think that we need to be ahead of the conversation, letting them know so that they're not ultimately surprised. I mean, we all realize projects run into trouble. We have to be able to defend them. We have to be able to mitigate them. And we have to be able to stand by them. That was not my comment. It's just the fact that we have three projects right now that are, are big numbers that I think the public needs to be aware of. Um, and they're already aware of it because they've already hit my inbox. It's not that I've just magically made it up.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Fideko. Any other questions from my colleagues? Not seeing any. I did have uh one uh on your uh budget breakdown. There's a budget allocated to the park and service restoration section.
Correct.
And so um, was that not part of the, the initial budget or is that new because of the emergency that we're dealing with?
Uh, there's nothing related in this uh budget ask related to the emergency. However, the conditions of the existing area where there is the frisbee golf and the restoration that was anticipated in that area. I think the conditions similar to the pipe, I'm, but I'm looking at the soil conditions in this example. Um, weren't really conducive to the reg, regrowth of uh, of the grass and the planting, so that's where we need to uh have some additional material and surface restoration uh in that area to ensure that Riverfront Park is one of the most desired uh places in our community. We want to make sure that it is restored and uh uh, uh, you know, that continues to be that destination for residents from Concord.
Yeah, and it's a very valid point. The Riverfront Park is one of those uh, many of the valued parts of our community that I think people are eager to get back to recreating on and, yeah, and if we have to invest to make that happen, that makes sense to me. Um, as to the overall project, um, there are projects that you need and there's projects that you want. Um, how, this is a need project. This is a key piece of infrastructure and um, you know, we need to address it. It had an unfortunate incident that we're still dealing with. Um, uh, but those happen. Um, and we are working through that process. But again, uh, when we're looking at it from my side of the council bench, there's need versus wants. Uh, this one is easy to uh analyze from that. Of course, this is uh being paid through, on the developer front through the offsite levies, which is makes a little bit easier to bear. Um, then to some of the other points uh made tonight. Um, when we're going through the list, I think each council needs to, you know, analyze that. There are needs versus wants and which ones best reflect the community we're trying to build or um, you know, the residents whose needs we're trying to uh best serve. So those are value conversations. Uh, but thank you very much um for your presentation. I very much appreciate it, as does the rest of the council. Thank you very much. I think at this point, we'll take a ten minute break and be back for five C jump start at for 5C Jump Start at. Excellent. All right, everyone. I know I had said 717 or something gracious, but since everybody is back in chambers, we will move on with the rest of our evening. So next up, introducing item 5C Jump Start Multi-Use Court. Ms Clarny, our manager of parks and open spaces, for your presentation. Thank you very much.
So good evening mayor, deputy mayor and council. This evening, I am here to provide an update on the 2024 Jump Start Multi-Use Court Capital Project. So the mission of Jump Start Charities is to enrich the lives of children in need through sport and physical activity. It's about giving all kids the same chance to participate as their neighbors, their classmates and their friends. Whether it's a chance to try a new sport or continue with a favorite one, no kid should be left out. An accessible multi-sport court facility with a value of $500,000 has been generously donated to Cochrane by Jump Start Charities with an anticipated construction kickoff date of June 2024. The proposed court service will have a play area of 14,000 square feet. And to ensure the court is inclusive and accessible for all users, the design will include such items as high contrast colors and white lines to support users with low vision, a double shaded wide player bench for temperature management and accessibility, wheelchair accessible roll-up tables, shaded accessible bleachers outside the court fencing, double wide and modified gates to support accessibility, adjustable height basketball nets, sport and parasport court lines for basketball, tennis and ball hockey, and a self-guided play area. The role of Cochrane in this collaboration is to provide a location for the court and prepare the site for construction and installation of the court surface and the amenities. Site requirements for the location include an area where courts are accessible, electricity is available for lighting, and washrooms are available. Initial site considerations included were Horse Creek Sports Park, Midford Park, West Rock Soccer Field and SLS. After applying the location requirements and construction timelines against each of the sites, along with factoring in the cost of installing missing requirements, a south parcel of land located as SLS was determined to be the best location for the court. This site is also ideal because the project promotes inclusivity, which is one of the core values of SLS. So as part of the site assessment, a geotechnical investigation was required to assess soil structure and ground conditions for suitability for the core structure. Through the assessment, it has been determined that the site has a significant amount of unsuitable fill, approximately 1.5 meters deep on average across the entire site. This volume of and type of material presents challenges for site preparation and specifications required for installation of the court surface and footings to support the shade structure. To reduce budget impacts, a value engineered solution has been designed to retain material on the site through regrading and construction of a topographical feature similar to a berm to create an amphitheater-like atmosphere along the perimeter of the court. Initially, engineered screw piles were proposed as a cost-effective method to install the footings required for the shade structure. However, due to the ground conditions, screw piles are not suitable and concrete footings are the only viable option that will meet the specifications to prevent frost heaving of the shade structure. As detailed in the 2024 capital budget submission for this project, costs were preliminary and would be refined once site conditions and required earthworks were determined. Earthworks and construction materials required to mitigate the unsuitable ground conditions and meet construction specs have increased the initially proposed budget by $200,000. This budgetary increase would bring Cochrane's investment in this project to $700,000 and a total project value between Cochrane and Jump Start's contributions to 1.2 million. There is an increased demand for inclusive play spaces for children of all abilities so they can participate in sport and have a sense of belonging. The closest communities with one of these innovatively designed Jump Start Courts is North Sanage, British Columbia or Thompson, Manitoba. When a community invests in inclusive play environments where everyone can come together regardless of their abilities, bias around differences disappear. Administration will be coming forward at the next regular council meeting on April 22 to request an additional $200,000 from the municipal infrastructure capital reserve to mitigate the unforeseen ground conditions at the proposed Jump Start location. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. See a few lights already. We are starting off with councillor Fedeco.
Thank you. I just want to ask a couple of questions. So the estimated project cost is 1.2 million?
That's the combined amount of the town's contribution and Jump Start's contribution.
And is that with the 200,000 override?
Yes.
So essentially Jump Start's paying 500,000 or paying 700,000?
Correct.
Okay, I guess is there, I appreciate the value of this project. It's certainly not that I don't appreciate the value of it. I'm just wondering, is there not a place that it could go that does not cost additional funding? Or what would be the risk if we just said no and held off for a period of time? Just, I mean, now we're paying more than the actual amount that's being allotted to us, which I guess is certainly not in any, I'm certainly not trying to disregard the amount that we're getting from Jump Start. It's just that I'm trying to understand that we're now paying more for a project that they're actually contributing towards.
So the initial sites that were considered, Horse Creek Silverwoods Park was one of them, and it is not serviced and did not align with the construction timelines. Midford Park, with the current configuration of the amenities in the parks, we have the stage, the rugby pitch and the two ponds. The only space that was available would be if we were to excavate a large section of the hill that is to the west of the stage. Midford also does not have year-round washrooms. The parking lot is gravel, which makes it challenging for folks with mobility devices. And the site is heavily used in the summer, so it could be, parking could become a challenge. The other site that was considered was West Rock Soccer Field. Power and water would need to be brought into the site and washrooms would also need to be built. Again, the parking lot is gravel and it also, it services the dog parks along Highway 22 and the skate park. So again, it's a small parking lot, not in the best condition for mobility devices and heavily used. So again, parking would be a challenge.
Is there any way that we could look for sponsorship to cover that extra $200,000 shortfall or anything along that line? Just because I think that, you know, it's one thing if we're talking matching grants and like, you know, somebody's contributing matching, we're contributing matching, but it becomes a little questionable when now the town is contributing more than versus a company actually donating. So I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity for a third party to come in to maybe provide a sponsorship or to look for alternatives? So that really, we're not having to dig this money out of reserves. Again, I understand it's not costing taxpayers essentially money right now, but there is, like I said before, there is no, like, reserves are reserves. It still comes from the taxpayers' dollar pocketbook. So I'm just trying to wonder if there's not an alternative that we could look or explore to seek other alternatives.
I'm not familiar with sponsorships.
Yeah, thank you. I'm happy through the chair to answer that. So generally speaking, as a municipality, we don't directly solicit sponsorship for municipal projects from the community. That's not a practice we engage in. If there is fundraising typically required, we usually see that happen through a third-party nonprofit or a community group that takes part in that. So I generally wouldn't recommend that the municipality directly solicit fundraising for a project. And just to reiterate, one of the part of Trish's presentation there was the commitment to the project from the municipal perspective was just to ensure a viable site. And so we're just trying to ensure that we meet our obligation as part of that, which is, you know, site viability as part of it.
Thank you. Thank you very much councillor Wilson.
Thank you. Just a question and a comment beyond the financials we just went through there. And that's that, I think I saw in the report that the 200,000 is principally for the shade attachment of the bleachers. Is that correct? Is that the?
It's to, yes. Originally, when the shade structure, well, the shade structure is part of the court originally, engineered screw piles were considered for anchoring it. But because of the subsurface conditions, it's a material called faluvial gravel, which is similar to what you see along the riverbanks, the rocks that, of all different sizes, there's really nothing for those screw piles to kind of bite into to hold that. So we've had to go to concrete spans in order to prevent the shade structure shifting with the frost.
Thank you. My question was more about, it's a question of proceed with the project or don't proceed, not have a shade structure or no shade structure.
The shade structure is part of it. The other part of the cost too was dealing with the, or managing the unsuitable fill on site. So to remove the fill and dispose of it offsite increased the budget costs significantly. So by redistributing it over the site through grading and landscaping, it reduced the cost. But those, it does, there are still costs associated with moving it around. It's not just a spill pile. We're turning it into like an attractive and usable feature. Yep.
Okay, understood. Thank you. I'm still excited about the project. It's unfortunate, but I totally agree with the site that was chosen, the reasons why. I think this will be a great thing for Cochrane. And if you just step back and think, if you offer me a project that benefits the entire community like this, it's going to be 40% funded through grant funds. I'm almost always in favor of it and I'm in favor of this. I think it'll be a great thing for Cochrane.
Excellent. Thank you very much councillor Flowers.
I agree with councillor Wilson. It's a quick win and it provides an opportunity for our young people in Cochrane. With all the growth that we've had, we're getting limited places where they can go and play. And the fact that it's so accessible, I still do think that there might be some government grants available because of the accessibility and uniqueness of it. I still think it might be worth looking into, but I'm all in favor of moving forward with this. And thank you to Jump Start for their participation.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Reed.
Yeah, I would just echo what my colleagues have said. I think it's critically important that we have an accessible multi-sport court facility, not just for the youth, but some of the seniors over there as well. I was wondering if there is a possibility of partnering, given that it is in the proximity of Spray Lakes, as partnering with Spray Lakes, that maybe the mayor can help me out here. Does it have a nonprofit status that it might be able to secure some grants that the town may not be able to acquire? So, yeah, I would suggest that maybe we want to pursue that in terms of being able to try partner this, the town, Jump Start and Spray Lakes in terms of being able to, I mean, clearly the facility is going to be a benefit to them. And see if they might be able to leverage something that town can, as to Mr Durcock's comment that the town doesn't necessarily do that, open soliciting, but the Spray Lakes could and does, right? So I have to recommend that.
If I may just note, in terms of applying for other grants or pursuing pieces, I just want to note as well, the anticipated construction start time of this is June, which is only just a few short weeks away. So it's unlikely that we're going to be able to, I just want to manage expectations around pursuing other additional grant opportunities or partnerships in order to meet the project timelines. I just think that's a little bit unlikely as well, just noting that.
Thank you, Mr Durkot. Councillor Fedeco.
So maybe that's a call out to anybody out there that wants to invest or come forward. We'd be more than happy to hear from you at this point. Just putting a shout out to all our people out there.
Thank you for that councillor Fedeco. I was going to say something facetious that was only going to get me in trouble, so I'm going to stop. You know, it's, I mean, it's unfortunate that we've, you know, found that the gravel under there is not suitable. But at the end of the day, we really do need more recreation. And this Jump Start partnership, it is amazing thing to be able to add more recreation and accessible recreation to our community. So it is a win. Any day we have $500,000 from another organization contributing to much needed recreation in our community, it's a good day. So I just want to make sure that we are celebrating that part of the story. And also with construction happening this summer makes me even happier because the more recreation we can get, the faster, the better. So, yeah, it's, and I do appreciate, like, you gave us the different sites you looked at and each have challenges. And as much as I love Cochrane, the fact that we are in a river, we have some creeks, some rivers, some hills, some escarpments, it is a difficult community to find flat land to do things on. So thank you very much for your presentation. And have a good evening, because I think that's it for this evening. Moving on to item, I'm not sure. Oh, 5D and E, which is going to be bylaw 182024, which is the Willows Land Use Amendment and Neighborhood Plan Amendment. And rejoining us is Mrs Anna Carrico.
Good evening again, Deputy Mayor and members of council. This evening, I am here to present Bylaw 18-2024, which is a land use amendment in the community of the Willows, as well as amendments to the Willows of River Heights Neighborhood Plan. Although these are two separate files and reflected by separate reports, they are being presented together this evening as they are both interrelated. These applications include neighborhood plan amendments and amendments to the land use in land use by law 01-2022, and these decisions will go on to inform subdivision, development permit, and building permit applications. These applications relate to lands in Willows West, which are outlined on the community map here. These are some of the last lands in the Willows to be developed and will facilitate completion of the community. Development in the Willows is guided by the River Heights Area Structure Plan approved in 2011, and the Willows of River Heights Neighborhood Plan approved in 2012. The subject lands in Willows West received land use in 2014. Some of the parcels in the east of the planned area had land use suggested to the current zoning in 2018, and three parcels had land use further amended in 2022. Bylaw 18-2024 is proposing to assign new land use to this area in response to current market and environmental conditions. Two lots are being proposed to change to RMX, as the rest of the area has developed out and realignment of an altalink line has allowed for the addition of these two lots on this block. A utility corridor in the west of the subject area is proposed to change from urban holdings to community service, which will provide a pathway connection and parks corridor through the area. A section of land in the center of the planned area is proposed to transition from residential mixed zoning to residential medium-density zoning, which is in line with the intent of the neighborhood plan, and also provides a transition from lower-density housing forms to slightly higher toward the existing commercial areas. This small area to the north is proposed to change from residential mix to parks and recreation, which is intended to have a new playground within it. A few areas to the east are proposed to change from residential mix to parks and recreation, which will provide parks and amenity space adjacent to existing residents that would currently be developed as housing under the current land use. The community service parcel in the center of the planned area was intended to be designated as environmental reserve through the Willows Neighborhood Plan, as at the time of writing the plan, it contained a Class IV wetland. Because of changing environmental conditions, which we will speak more to shortly, the wetland is drying up and is now being proposed as medium-density residential housing. This is the land use concept from the Willows of River Heights Neighborhood Plan, which shows that the lands surrounding the wetland were intended for the RM district, which was the multi-unit dwelling district in our previous land use by law, and is equivalent to the high-density residential district in our new land use by law. When the Willows Neighborhood Plan was written in 2012, two wetlands were identified to be protected and retained as environmental reserve, titled Wetland 80 and Wetland 91, which are shown on this map image from 2012. Wetland 80 was classified as a Class IV wetland, and Wetland 91 a Class III wetland, with Wetland 80 indicated as the largest and most productive wetland in the planned area at the time of writing the neighborhood plan. As the communities of the Willows, Rivercrest, and River Heights have advanced, and urban development has occurred surrounding the wetlands, the wetlands have decreased in size. Both wetlands are in the same catchment area and fed through surface water, so with the reduced water flow they are receiving, they have been drying up. Wetland 91 is no longer serving the wetland habitat it did previously, and it has been determined that being under the same conditions, Wetland 80 will soon present similar to Wetland 91. The Alberta wetland policy dictates that any activity that may impact a wetland requires either a Water Act approval or a Code of Practice notice unless the activity is exempt under the water regulation. This means that in order to proceed with any development on these lands that contain Wetland 80, that Water Act approval from Alberta Environment must be obtained. The province granted approval to infill Wetland 80 for the purpose of residential development on May 18, 2023. The approval was informed by a wetland assessment and impact report that was prepared for the applicant in 2022. The wetland assessment report used in the province's approval identified and classified on-site wetlands, evaluated the wetlands, assessed potential impacts to the wetland as a result of development in Willows West, and described mitigation actions. Wetland 80 was identified in the report as a 0.58 hectare wetland that provides drainage and storage for seasonal runoff, flood mitigation, and habitat for amphibian and bird species. The report concludes that potential environmental effects associated with the permanent loss of the wetland include removal of vegetation and loss of wildlife habitat, a decrease of wetland-reliant wildlife species, disturbance to wildlife in and around the Willows West site, alteration of drainage, and reduction of on-site water storage. The report identified mitigation strategies if the wetland were to be removed, including avoiding nesting and breeding periods of inhabiting species, and providing replacement of the wetland. The applicant is proposing to provide replacement of the wetland through an in-loop payment based on the wetland value established in the report. And again, this report, including impacts and mitigation actions, was used by the province in the decision to issue approval to infill the wetlands. With the removal of the community service parcel containing the former wetland, the applicant is proposing to develop the subject site with a mix of housing forms, including lower-density multi-unit dwellings intended as purpose-built rentals. The site will integrate public park and amenity space as illustrated in the draft concept shown on the screen. Although the wetland is currently on privately-owned land, it has been informally used by residents as a skating rink in the winter months. The applicant is proposing a floodable basketball court in the new park space, which can be a safe and publicly accessible skating rink for the community. There is also a public playground proposed in the west portion of the planned area, which would provide an additional new amenity. This park space will serve as a buffer between the existing residences to the east in the Willows and the proposed medium-density residential in the center of the planned area. The addition of medium-density housing to this area will also provide a more gradual transition from the existing lower-density residential areas located to the east to the commercial uses to the west of the community. As the land uses being proposed are no longer in alignment with the Willows of River Heights Neighborhood Plan, there are also amendments being proposed to that plan. The proposed neighborhood plan amendments will update maps, figures, and text within the plan to reference the new land uses, and will also amend all text and figures to remove references to retaining Wetland 80, which has now received provincial approval to be infilled. The amendments also include adding the park concept shown earlier as an appendix to the plan, which will provide more assurance as to how this space will be developed. We have provided a summary of what the ultimate impacts of approving land use within Bylaw 18-2024 are, and what is being lost or gained in both circumstances. If the bylaw is approved, Wetland 80 and the surrounding habitat will be permanently removed, with compensation being provided through in-loop payment to the province. If the bylaw is not approved, the future of the wetland is unknown, as surrounding conditions could result in it no longer serving a wetland function and presenting similar to Wetland 91 to the southeast. While Wetland 80 has been informally used as a skating rink, it has been on private property, and if it were to remain and be designated as environmental reserve, skating would not be permitted. The amenity concepts proposed within the neighborhood plan provide a floodable basketball court, which can act as a safe and publicly accessible skating rink in the winter months. The plan also proposes an additional playground that currently does not exist, and pathway connections with seating and amenity space throughout the plan that are not currently indicated within the neighborhood plan. The new land uses within Bylaw 18 add park space behind all of the existing residences, whereas with the current land use, there is residential zoning adjacent to many of the existing properties. The addition of medium-density housing also creates a more gradual transition between the lower-density housing and the commercial and industrial areas. The developer has also been approved for funding through the Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation that will allow 20% of the units in the future medium-density development in the center to be classified as affordable units, which meet the CMHC definition of affordable housing, and are intended to be rented out below market value. This slide provides an overview of how this application aligns with the town's existing policy. Cochrane's MDP contains policy advocating for a mix of housing types that provides housing for all residents regardless of life cycle, household size, or income level, developing in an efficient manner, and creating pedestrian connections, all of which are supported by this application. The MDP also speaks to protecting our water resources and safeguarding ecologically significant areas. While the neighborhood plan established Wetland 80 as an ecologically significant area in 2012, under current conditions, the province has approved it to be infilled. The net impacts of approving Bylaw 18-2024 include increasing housing choice within this community, creating the opportunity for affordable housing units, increasing pathway connections and connectivity, and creating and enhancing community amenities. While the former Wetland 80 would be lost with the approval of this bylaw, with the viability of the current area functioning as a wetland in the future uncertain, this application is proposing a slightly larger area of park space to be provided, which continues to provide open space and recreational opportunities for the community. The River Heights Area Structure Plan, Cochrane Sustainability Plan, and Council Strategic Plan also speak to providing a diverse housing mix, providing affordable housing options, and creating connected communities, while also noting the importance of protecting environmental features and natural areas. This slide provides a qualitative analysis of the value of the current land use bylaw and the bylaw being proposed by the applicant. Wetland 80 would be lost with the approval of the bylaw, and with the current use, the environmental lands would remain with potentially deteriorating conditions. Bylaw 18 increases open space compared to the current land use, creates more trails and connectivity that are currently indicated, and provides additional community amenities within the open space. The bylaw creates a transition between existing low-density properties and the existing commercial and industrial uses to the west, increases housing choice in the community, which primarily has residential mixed zoning throughout it currently, and allows for affordable housing to be created. And all of this results in land use that is more aligned with current policy, as was discussed on the previous slides. The next steps for this application include first reading proposed for April 22, a public hearing proposed on May 13, council's consideration of second and third reading proposed for May 27, and subsequent subdivision development permit and building permit applications that would follow. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to welcome comments and questions.
Thank you very much. It looks like we've got a full slate of questions lighting up, but we will start with Councilor Nagel.
Yeah, are we legally obligated to allow development to happen here now that Environmental Alberta has already been consulted?
Council Nagel through the chair. At this point, we're not legally obligated to pursue with approval the bylaw. However, we do look through our partners at the provincial level to provide us with that subject matter expertise related to the environmental review about sustainability of the wetlands. No, we are not legally required to approve the development. We just know that there is provincial support for infilling the former land.
So then, since this is still up to our discretion, I think this is a terrible idea. I can't believe we're talking about bulldozing wetlands this year to build houses on it. There has been province-wide discussions about how this has been a historically dry period. Of course, this wetland has dried up. When the development was first built, there were wetlands all over where the Willows and Fireside currently are, and the really big important ones were the ones that were protected, not only for the beauty of the neighborhood, but also to support local wildlife, to support the local watersheds in the area. And under very slim circumstances, would I consider bulldozing wetlands this year to build houses on them?
Thank you, Council Nagel. Council Fedeko.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I wanted to find out if there will be a public hearing on this particular land use or the change of land use, and what does that look like for residents, people to come and speak their opinions?
Through the chair to Councilor Fedeko, there will absolutely be a public hearing. This, again, is a land use amendment application, so first reading would be the next step. And then, at this point, we're proposing a public hearing for May 13, but that date would be formally established at the first reading. So any member of the public can speak on that date, or also submit any written comments to administration in advance of that date as well.
Thank you for that. There's a couple of things that I just wanted to mention. If council were to pursue this option, which we've heard from Council Nagel, but if council was to pursue this, I mean, number one, the idea of a playground and a floodable basketball court, they all sound great, but they don't count for anything if we actually don't hold the developers accountable to actually produce that first. As a resident of living in Sunset Ridge, when I built in Sunset Ridge, I was told there was going to be a splash park. I can't tell you how many different amenities that were going to come over this period of time. They don't seem to exist. And so I would absolutely encourage council, if we're going to pursue approving this, that we actually hold the developer accountable to actually build the playground, build the basketball court first, rather than us building more houses in any particular area. And I'm not even saying that I'm for it to begin with. Affordable housing also, I believe, is being tossed around this stage way too often, because this is not affordable housing, this is more housing options. And I just want to be very clear that unless somebody's coming forward with affordable housing, which is, you know, going to be government-based affordable housing, us talking about affordable housing is just more housing diversity, whether or not that's rentals or more accessible places. But I really don't like us talking about affordable housing in the way that some people perceive affordable housing, because they're not the same thing in my mind, unless you're going to correct me and tell me that there's going to be some sort of government-building housing here, which I don't believe is the case. And I think that we need to be very, very clear to the public. That's what we're talking about.
Through the chair, Council Fedeko, just to add a little bit of clarity, this specific proposed development has applied for CMHC funding, so it is intended to be below-market housing that aligns with the CMHC definition of affordable housing, but does provide additional housing diversity, but in the specific one, also affordable housing as per the definition of CMHC.
Thank you. That is fantastic. I'm glad to hear that, but I think that we should be very clear on any sort of...
Any sort of things coming forward, that we are very clear on if this is actually CMHC-supported or it's not, because I've just heard that there's been many occasions where the term, and it's not just us as administration, it's the media, it's a lot of different cases where it gets tossed around as just another catch and phrase, and it doesn't mean that it's actually affordable. So I just want to make sure that we are, we're actually explaining it in the right way. So thank you for that, and I love the idea that it could be affordable in that way.
Council Reed.
Yeah, I just wanted to reemphasize that this is a land use amendment, that it actually does go through a public process, as has been the case for years, and that there will be three readings of it. I was curious about the applications of, is there a pipeline that runs through this parcel of land?
There is. Echo Gas is on the west side of this property, so...
And Drew, does that create any implications as what's being proposed?
That's where the regional or the pathway on the west side is proposed. Joe, if you could go back to that. The one comment that I would like to make for council's benefit, I appreciate this is a, you know, this application is here today. This is just to introduce it to you. There absolutely will be a public hearing. I think it's important, critical importance, to hear from the community. This is a departure from the 2012 plan, so to hear from that community, as well as hear from the developer and ask those questions. I'd just like to clarify, there is a process here, and the public hearing is a very important part of that, so...
Right. Clearly, any land use amendments have always had public engagements. I appreciate that. Like Council Nagel, I have some concerns about the wetland, and I'm anxious to learn more about it. I'm just curious about with the loss of Wetland 91, will there be subsequent amendments to this, or is that piece landlocked now, so to speak?
Through the chair to Councilor Reed, yes. Wetland 91 has already been subdivided and designated as environmental reserve.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, Council Flowers.
I too had questions about the affordable housing. So who manages it, and what if they don't get the grant, and how long can it stay affordable? There's a lot to calling it affordable housing. And how long can it stay affordable? There's a lot to calling it affordable housing.
Thank you for the question. Through the chair councillor Flowers. Those are additional details that I think the applicant will be more than happy to provide at that public hearing phase. And something we'll definitely investigate to make sure that we bring back for a second and third reading as well. But those specific details about the management of it, I don't have for you today.
My other question was, what happens to the money in lieu of having the wetland?
The money through the chair councillor Flowers, the cash in lieu component would be paid to Alberta Environment, who would then utilize that, that money to invest in the additional wetlands that they feel are most appropriate and are the highest priority.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, I'm seeing no more questions. My questions had been, yes, around the twenty percent below-market parameters. So it's great that on the option here is both greater market diversity and that affordable housing mix piece in there. And agreeing with councillor Fedecco, the clarity of terms is always important in any of our discussions. And this one just, yeah, this one's a tough one for me, because I remember when it came forward and the council of the day really did want to protect and support wetlands. So I am looking forward to the beautiful presentation on that. Sorry, one follow-up question in regards to the compensation. That goes to the province, and then they decide where to apply that funding. But that can be anywhere in the province and not necessarily anywhere related to Cochrane. Is that correct?
Deputy Mayor McFadden, that is my understanding. Yes.
Yeah, I think that stayed consistent with my understanding of the years. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, team. I think we are ready to move on to our next item. Thank you. Next up, we are looking on item five F, which is the community enhancement evaluation for the Robinson Neighborhood Plan and Area Structure Plan Amendment. We've got our senior planner, Mr. Cole Holmes, and Pam McInnis from BNA.
Sorry, thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, members of council. I'm here tonight introducing the community enhancement evaluation for the anticipated Robinson Neighborhood Plan and Area Structure Plan Amendments application. And as well, I will also introduce Pam McInnis, as they will be presenting to you directly. The community enhancement evaluation is for council's consideration and feedback this evening. The CEE process was first adopted by council in 2016 and was based around the principles of municipal development plan. And it is intended to provide council, the applicant, and administration the opportunity to assess and discuss potential area structure plans and neighborhood plans before they are submitted as formal applications. The applicants are required to complete the CE process prior to submitting their application, in fact. Ten questions were created to assess alignment with the five main principles of the municipal development plan. And then all participants can assign a rating from one to five, one being the lowest and five being the highest, as to the degree to which they believe the development proposal achieves the goals in each question. It is also the intent of this, that the community enhancement evaluation will generate further discussions before the application is formally submitted to the town. So we are on step one today, where council can provide feedback and generate discussion. And then, applications will be submitted and go through the application process, including circulation, analysis, revisions, public engagement, consideration, and of course, your decisions. And if approved, in its future form will lead to a land use application for areas where gravel extraction use is completed. And with that, I introduce Pam McInnis from BNA, who will continue with the rest of this presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Fedecco and members of council. We are excited to be here tonight to walk through the vision for the proposed neighborhood plan, the Robinson Neighborhood Plan, and how the planning of these lands will benefit Cochrane. With me here tonight are Emily Klaufenberg from BNA, Kent Highstead, representing John Robinson and Madley Developments. The Robinson lands have been undergoing gravel extraction since the early two thousands. It's currently part of the South Ridge ASP, which is over thirty, about thirty years old actually this year. Over time, as the gravel was extracted, the operations within the gravel pit have shifted north. Recently, Heidelberg has taken over operations of the gravel pit, and they're predicting an advanced schedule for depletion of the gravel. This is opening an opportunity to consider the next use for these lands. And the exciting part is that it's coming at a great time, because the Glenbow Ranch Provincial Park and Alberta Trailnet are actively pursuing the connection of the Trans-Canada Trail through Cochrane, which will include a new pedestrian bridge over the Bow River. Additionally, South Bowl Landing is beginning to advance development, which is permitting the opportunity for us to do some joint planning. And I'll get into those details a little bit shortly here. But as a summary of our introduction to the new neighborhood planning area, we are anticipating a community rich with Cochrane's identity. It will have views of the Bow River, the mountains, Cochrane's own hills and valleys, and in the north, views of downtown. It will provide housing diversity, so residents within different walks of life can enjoy this community. It will include a comprehensive pathway network that not only connects to the Glenbow Ranch Provincial Park, but also throughout the community, giving access to the Riverside Pathway Network and up to James Walker Trail to connect to downtown. Our tentative name, pending feedback, is Walker's Reach. The lands are adjacent to James Walker Trail, and the name is intended to play tribute to James Walker and the rich ranching history of Cochrane. A reach is a geographical term for a long continuous stretch of stream or river. It is a historical sailor term that is, references the distance that could be traveled within one day's reach. Given that much of the boundary of Walker's Reach is surrounded by the Bow River, we wanted a community name that references this while also tying into Cochrane's identity. It is unique, but it's really grown on us, and we hope that it grows on you too. In consultation with administration, to enable Walker's Reach, we are proposing to amend the River Heights ASP. The lands currently sit within the South Ridge ASP. However, that document is quite outdated, and it does not conform to Cochrane's modern policies. It would need a full overhaul, which doesn't make a lot of sense, given that the rest of the communities within that ASP are developed. Amending the River Heights ASP is quite straightforward, as the policies within that document are modern and easily applied to these lands. We envision the entire land holding to make up about two to three neighborhood plans. And the focus tonight is the south portion of the site, which would be neighborhood plan one. This is a very special piece of land, and we want residents who live and visit here to feel connected to the natural beauty around them. Every resident will be minutes, if not directly connected, to green space and pathways bringing them to the rich natural amenities. The regional park will be a continual hub of activity, bringing a unique recreation-style vibrancy to the community. As a landing point to the Trans-Canada Trail, the regional park will become a destination point for residents. Bike commuters and nature enthusiasts will come here to connect to Glenbow Ranch Provincial Park and/or Calgary. We see a potential for seasonal recreation or commercial, commercial use here as well. Scenic views are a wet set Cochrane apart from any other city or town in the region. Walker's Reach will celebrate this and take advantage of every opportunity. While the overall community layout is still a work in progress, the intention is for lots to mainly run perpendicular to the slope so that land steps down towards the river, views are maintained. Roads and open spaces have been strategically placed to maximize views as you enter into the community. The shape of the community is long and narrow. It means that residents won't have to turn down too many streets to get home, and it'll make the community feel like a small-town community, because no matter where you live within it, you will only be a few blocks from James Walker Trail or the banks of the Bow River. The architectural style will include modern elements of ranch and farmhouse houses, maintaining the Western heritage theme of Cochrane. The development of the Robinson lands will benefit all of Cochrane. Upon completion of the first use of this land, which was extracting the natural resources, Cochrane residents will finally have access to the Bow River's edge in this part of Cochrane. Let me just flip back. The entire area around the community will be dedicated as municipal or environmental reserve to enable regional pathways in, along this perimeter. Stormwater management facilities, which are here, will be set adjacent to the river in a naturalized manner to visually and physically expand this area, in addition with pathways all the way throughout. The regional park will be planned and designed in conjunction with Qualico and Cochrane Administration. These conversations have only just started. They're, so they're in the early stages still. However, everyone at the table understands how important it would be to get this right and to make it a benefit for the entire community. As mentioned, and given that this park will be a draw not only to this community, but all of Cochrane residents as they seek to access Glenbow Ranch Park, there could be a potential for seasonal recreational or commercial uses in this area that might, for instance, offer a coffee shop or ice cream store, or maybe bike or scooter rentals in the summertime. But this is the type of conversation that we'd be having with parks and community services to understand needs and a desire for those kinds of uses. The contributions to the overall town largely include the completion of James Walker Trail and the facilitation of the regional park as a landing point to Trans-Canada Trail. These are significant benefits that have been long anticipated. In addition, there's full intention to include a variety of homes. And similar to the Willows, Kent Highstead has already looked into CMHC-supported housing that could be into this, brought into this community as well, which would include those below-market homes. And in, there also, there would be just regular townhomes, move-up homes, estate homes, and villa-style developments to provide some options for seniors. The very nature of the proposed development of the gravel extraction lands, support redevelopment, sorry, of the extraction lands, supports Cochrane's planning principles of sustainable development and efficient use of land and resources. Much of the gravel from these lands was used locally to build roads and structures, reducing the climate impact of importing natural resources to support development. At the point of redevelopment, the gravel extraction operation would have been, would have provided economic benefit to the town for over twenty-five years. And now the lands will be repurposed to house a residential community, providing eventually over twenty-three hundred homes and recreation within Cochrane's existing footprint. The redevelopment of the Robinson lands will enable the completion of James Walker Trail and facilitate the establishment of that arterial road connection as it's intended to function. It will alleviate traffic on River Heights Drive while allowing full access to downtown from the southeast communities of Cochrane. Regional and local pathways will provide connectivity throughout the community and to adjacent communities. In addition, pathways, in addition to the pathways, all of the roads, including James Walker Trail, offer sidewalks that further connectivity opportunities. Transit will be more, become more efficient with James Walker Trail completed, and pedestrians and cyclists will have more options. Walker's Reach will be designed to ensure that transit can access the community, providing transit mobility options for residents. The pathway connections will be abundant, and the Trans-Canada Trail will become a key placemaking part of Cochrane. In regards to Cochrane's renewable energy framework, the community will be developed to be solar and EV-ready, giving residents the ability to access alternative energy sources. Sustainable building materials and practices will be required for all new homes. In addition, as, as I mentioned, the use of gravel locally within local development reduces the need to import that resource, which greatly reduces carbon emissions, making local development more climate-friendly. And the redevelopment of the site is a sustainable way to provide future housing without annexation. A significant part of the community's identity will be connecting with the surrounding environment. The adjacency to the Bow River and Glenbow Ranch Provincial Park will draw people outside. The comprehensive and connected pathway network will promote walking and biking throughout the community and into other parts of Cochrane and beyond. Residents in Cochrane want to be engaged and informed of what is happening in their community. Our team has already begun engaging with our neighboring developers, the Trans-Canada Trail Committee, and representatives from Sonoma Dakota Nation. The next stage would be to develop a website that we would populate with information about the upcoming Watchers, Walker's Reach community. We would send out a mail-out informing the residents of where, of that website and where they can find more information and get in contact with us. And once we are further along in our process, we would begin direct engagement with the community. Hybrid working styles, aging populations, and global economies are changing where people are choosing to live. Cochrane's natural beauty is a draw to many, and Walker's Reach will attract people at all stages and walks of life. The variety of built form and varying affordability levels will provide lifecycle housing within Cochrane's existing footprint. And that, that over twenty-three hundred homes will be created without having to draw capital, infrastructure, a long distance to service a new community. The stormwater management facilities are intended to look and feel like part of the natural environment, turning a functional role into an amenity. And so lastly, our first step towards implementation of what we summarized would be the submission of the ASP amendment. This slide shows the addition of the Robinson lands into the ASP boundary. The intention is to ensure that the future neighborhood plans align with Cochrane's vision and goals for sustainable, high-quality development, as identified in the River Heights ASP. The ASP level, we show arterial and collector road connections, as well as general location of land uses, storm ponds, and environmental features. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. McInnis. Looks like the bench is warming up. Our first question goes to councillor Fedecco.
Thanks for the presentation. I don't have so many questions necessary about your actual presentation, because my inbox is filled with the concrete batch plant right now. And so I guess I'm wondering, is there any correlation between, you know, concrete batch plant and this particular proposal? Because I know that one's supposed to speed up the other, or perhaps, or is there any correlation at all? Because I could be misreading that.
I might have to pass that question to Kent.
Through the chair to councillor Fedecco, Kent Highstead of Madley. Kevin is also here in attendance tonight that works for Heidelberg on the gravel pit. They are not related. The development was going to occur in what Pam has considered neighborhood one to the south end, because the extraction of the gravel is complete. It'll take us many years to work through those lands before we would follow the extraction as it moves, moves north. The concrete batch plant just happens to be happening at the same time, although it will greatly speed up the extraction of the gravel and the completion of the pit in a much faster manner.
Thank you for that. I think it's, it's very important to outline that right now, because I will tell you that my inbox is mostly full of concrete batch plant questions right now. And there's a lot of confusion. There's a lot of questions coming from residents, and there's really no opportunity, unfortunately, for them to be able to actually express their thoughts. So that's number one, which makes it very difficult to kind of, I, I thank you for that, that they're not related. But it's, it's going to form a very strong community presence. I believe that they're going to think that these two are correlated, and one's happening, and then the next one seems to happen, right? So thank you for that clarification. The only other thing that I would like to bring up is, have you considered senior cell housing? Again, when I go back to the affordable housing prospect, have you considered, like, actually isolating part of the land for, for particular senior affordable housing? Not necessarily just what you think might be senior housing?
Again, through the chair to councillor Fedecco, we would consider all of those things. What is affordable senior housing? I don't know if it's apartments or assisted living or what it is exactly today. But there will be sites that will be designated as multi, which those things can occur.
Thank you. And I guess my only, my only thing that I can't strongly suggest enough is that public engagement is key. And I'm not talking about just like, kind of like putting up a sign, random emails out. When you're building in that particular area, there, it's not just your bordering neighbors, like, we're talking of Riverside and Presidents and those people, it's Glen Eagles. It's all the people that overlook that particular area. It's all the people that overlook that particular area. I can't, I can't strain that enough because those people are the people that come to me. Um, and if you're not doing that, then I can't particularly support it. So, um, you want support, engage, 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 engage. And when you think you haven't engaged enough, engage more. Um, because the more people know, the better off it is for everybody out there. And I really do feel that um, for whatever reason, over the last little while, like we've kind of lost that, and that's where residents get angry, and they aren't being heard, they don't know the information, they come back and look at us as council members, and they look at all of us, not just one, not just two, we're a collective group sitting at this bench, and they criticize all of us. So please, engage more in whatever way you can, and that will likely garner you some support. And I suggest you do it as many ways as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Podeko. Over to Counselor Nagel.
It's good to see you two here again. Um, these villas that you have here, would these be bungalows? Uh, so these, and these would be housing options that are targeted towards kind of retirees, empty nesters, kind of like what you see, I don't even know how well you know these stuff, like the front of fireside? Actually, I think you would know that. Yeah.
Yes, correct. Yes, there would be similar to that, yeah.
Okay.
Usually, usually side-by-side duplexes.
I definitely think we need more of that. And then, I'm having a hard time on the graph, just because some of these, not the graph, the chart, some of these colors are very, very similar. Um, I think I see you've got one light tan that is single-family, another light tan that is single-family-laned, which is like two different zonings, but almost the exact same color. Perhaps I'm partially colorblind, and I'm now learning that tonight. Um, the the lower-density one, which is not the laned one, is there any of that in Phase One, or is that only kind of Phase Two? And that, or whatever we're calling these phases?
Through the chair to Counselor Nagel, there is in Phase One, street-oriented townhomes as well.
Okay.
So, that would be similar to what is on Riviera Way in precedents where there are four to six units attached, they're fee simple.
But um, like you made mention of like residential state housing, and then there's obviously a bunch of single attachment. Is in this first phase that's all colored up in the in the map, is that only single-family-laned, or is the other lower-density single-family in there as well?
It hasn't totally been confirmed, but in in the first phase, it's not going to be a state. This is mostly affordable, so there'll be everything from street-oriented towns to laned, front-drive garage-less, and front-drive garaged homes, all of those.
Okay. Um, well, I don't normally get to say this, but I think I actually like the way this development looks. Um, it's 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 what I've been talking about consistently for, I think, several years. It's pretty low-density, it's got lots of green space, there's bungalow options for uh older homebuyers. Um, can't stress enough that I love that the whole thing is surrounded by green space. I think if you guys could do one more thing to kind of take it to the next level, it'd be a dog park, that's a really big thing around here. Um, but actually, I'm usually honestly quite critical development, uh but I like this neighborhood as it looks. And it's the density, it's the green space, and it's the bungalows. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Nagel. Uh, I'm gonna mark it in the calendar. Counselor Reed.
It is working, worth marking in the calendar. I want to begin by saying thank you for politely identifying that the batch plant and this development are two separate and distinct issues. Um, and secondly, that, you know, the, at least in the past, your colleague has been very active in in terms of public engagement, done a very good job, in my opinion, from uh past experience. Um, my questions are the, with the with the CEE, uh, the environmental stewardship part of that, does that take into consideration uh the availability of water? Um, and likewise, as part of the CEE, does it take into consideration the appropriate infrastructure that we require for development at this size? I don't know if that's something for Nicole or Drew or...
Counselor Reed, uh, Ms. McInnis has been uh the benefactor of doing the only two CEEs, I believe, that we've done. So again, this is uh something that, again, we're trying to refine, so um, it's it's really intended to introduce this, get counsel's initial thoughts, uh, provide the community an opportunity to get some ideas on this development, and then go into uh more details once they decide to formally proceed. Um, but again, the, we've been working on water solutions, that's something that we look at as the municipality's responsibility. Of course, we would ask them uh to uh consider that as they move forward in their application. And I'm sorry, what was the second part of that?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yes. They'd have to be considering infrastructure as part of their uh application as well.
Now, the question for the applicant would be, will the quality of life uh for the residents in the Walker's Reach be affected by the ongoing gravel extraction?
Through the chair to Counselor Reed. It probably will affect everybody over time in the town as it exists here in the middle. We have seen when we've done precedents that it has been relatively accepted because there is a finite time. So a lot of it has come to the discussion of how long is it going to be here? I don't think any of the public generally knows that it's been accelerated now, the lifeline, the lifetime of the pit, it's going to actually exhaust itself much quicker than we thought last year, probably even.
Right.
So, the extraction will move north, and we're starting at the South End. It will be extracted faster than we can keep up with it.
Okay. Great. Thank you again. Drew, I just wanted to compliment the Planning Department. I think the CEE is a way to go in terms of these things, and I think that it might be something, a model that you wish to continue to use moving forward. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, over to Mayor Janon.
Yeah, thank you. I do appreciate the opportunity too to provide feedback at this time. Uh, some of the things I like about it, um, the trail connection, appreciate that and the bridge and how you've highlighted that, and while it doesn't touch your lands in this plan, I mean, I think you referenced that you're working with Qualico on a joint uh use for tho- those, the little cutout there. Um, but I imagine that the great trail would go around the path connection around the river, is that, is that the idea?
Through the chair to Mayor Janon. In the interim, because development just doesn't instantly occur, there will be an interim connection from where the bridge crosses the river, through the Qualico lands, through our lands, to James Walker Trail to hit the regional pathway to use in the interim. There will be provision for the regional path to go all the way around the peninsula.
Okay, thank you. You just segued perfectly into my next question was, um, and you talked about it in the in the presentation, but the east-to-west trail connections, I assume those are all in there? Uh, Mr. Highstead, you just talked, and I love that you highlighted that. I mean, of course, in the future, that's the the grand scheme, but in the interim, that'll be a gravel pit to the north, and then uh residents would have to, yes, thank you, uh, access through there. But the east-to-west, kind of across from Riverside to Precedent Side, James Walker Trail Side, is there connections?
Through the chair to Mayor Janon, are you speaking about beyond Walker's Reach? Where would the trail connection go?
Within.
With, so within, so, yes, um, as Kent mentioned, the initial landing point would be here. We would bring trails um along here and then out on up onto the road, then onto James Walker Trail where the larger connections are, um, as the interim, but that actually would stay as an ultimate, too. There would always be a connection through the community east-to-west. This is going to be a big draw, and a lot of the community is going to access the bridge through this uh network rather than going all the way around the peninsula. The peninsula will be there um as an amenity, but we do see this really important connection east-to-west.
I think Mayor Janon, I think you're also looking for more than one, and yes, pretty much every traffic circle on James Walker that exists today will have east-west connections.
Perfect, thank you. You nailed it. Um, one, uh, I think Counselor Nagel touched on this one, but um, my question is the bottom, what is that, the southwest corner, it says villas. Um, we're dealing with the property area C, um, just below that. Um, what is the transition from Riverside to that site?
Mayor Janon, maybe I gotta be careful what I say to my fellow competitor developers, but we would probably look at things a little bit differently. I don't necessarily believe in real high-density outside of the core of Cochrane. We we don't seem to economically succeed when we do things like this, so our vision there would be a combination of townhomes and villas. Again, likely the villas would have the greatest views in the town, almost to date, looking down the River Valley.
Yeah, thank you. You're you're treading in where we can't right now, but the height and the differential between existing and proposed, I mean, I don't, I guess I don't want to set ourselves up with the future.
All I can tell you right now is they would really be two-story homes.
Okay. Okay, right to it, thank you. Um, trail connection, I talked to lands adjacent, um, Walker's Reach, I have really no issue with the name, I'm glad you asked, though, thank you. Um, pathway connections, uh, James Walker Trail was the other one, I think it was touched on, but with this first phase, that would be, I mean, I think the traffic circle right in the center is where James Walker Trail is developed to currently. And then this would see that connection to the top of the hills.
Yeah, so it continues up.
Yeah. Okay, perfect, yeah, I think I agree with my colleagues tonight, um, turning gravel extraction into a parks, pathways, and a future neighborhood like this makes sense on these lands, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Janon, Counselor Flowers.
I too wanted to emphasize the seniors' housing, the need for it. Um, I've talked to so many seniors that want to downsize, but they don't know where they're going to go, and they're scared they're going to have to leave the community. So, um, a real focus on seniors would, um, I think be fill a need and really be popular in this community. Um, without stairs, hopefully. And is it steep, the land?
Through the chair to Counselor Flowers, the land does slope generally at the South End from James Walker Trail to the East, so there is some slope going that way. As you go farther north, it flattens out. So, the development will be graded in an appropriate manner so that everything will exist, you know, with normal housing on it, but at the South End, there's a little bit more slope to the site.
Great, thank you. And I too think a dog park would be nice to have there.
Excellent. Um, yeah, thank you very much for the presentation. It's been a number of years since we saw a community enhancement evaluation. I was trying to think how far back in history that first one was, but, and I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to kind of give some feedback at this at this lens. Um, I do feel that this plan aligns uh with the kind of the best practices that we have been asking in the community in recent years, um, so I appreciate that. My questions are more around, um, I think you've kind of filled in how it would go well, but I've always wondered, the access, coming off of Presidents or James Walker Trail with the current gravel extraction, that's that's quite an escarpment that's been created. Um, what, how are you planning to make that a, an accessible road that you can get down?
The Chair, Counselor McFadden, this traffic circle is existing, so most southerly James Walker Trail uh intersection today. This road that exists going east-west or almost east-west is designed to be no more than eight percent with portions of four percent, so it meets all of the town standards for grade on the roadway. What will be interesting is this green space in here and around is a three-to-one slope, so the subdivision is going to be quite a bit lower than what actually James Walker Trail exists at. So, it will, it'll probably create a fairly nice feel when you get down into the community, you're kind of out of all of the action, so to speak.
Yeah, so that that road's gonna kind of come down, you're gonna build it up along Birm that comes down to the community, and then the uh the housing on the west side is gonna be kind of nestled up like rather steep bank.
It it'll be kind of up on top of the hill, so to speak.
Right, okay.
Lack of a better description.
As I was watching the extraction and the development happen, I was wondering how that was going to be solved, and I have to admit, I I didn't think I would ever see this piece of land come forward with a development request. Uh, my next question is regards, I know the province has been talking about uh three different options for a dam along the Bow, and one of them, of course, is uh to the east of us, and I think there is some forecast, if that was the option, uh forecasted impact um of how the Bow River would exist in the Cochrane context. Have you looked at the possible impacts of that on this development?
So, Counselor McFadden, yes, we're part of that discussion and it's been included. The development land here is out of all of the floodplain. So, partially, the green space primarily up in here would be flooded if they chose the bear's paw option.
Right.
But it would never affect any of the housing.
Okay.
Significantly lower.
Yeah, and I was looking at your flood fringe piece because it's been a number of years since we've looked at development along the river. Um, and I know we all want to be careful that we're not, you know, building into a problem. Um, so I would have, you know, further questions around that as we got into it. Um, what was the other one? Walker's Reach. I like the name of Walker's Reach, oh, um, sorry, the density, uh, I know the design is getting some great reviews from my colleagues. Uh, the density, though, what is the target density for the site?
We, uh, Counselor McFadden, we are um trying to reach a UPA. So currently, we have at, we did add a few multisites um to get us a little bit higher density because a UPA is the uh minimum that we can be. Um, if we could go lower, it probably would be a little bit lower, but um we we will meet the UPA as per policies.
Okay, yeah, that was my question there. Um, and sorry, the timeline was presented, I know you're looking to kind of advance um this decision level kind of this next year or so, but then you're looking for actual, did I get that right? Um, the actual start of construction, remind me of your timelines.
Counselor McFadden, as a developer, I'd like to start tomorrow.
Right, of course.
Um, following the presentation tonight, the area structure plan will be submitted. It will go through its process, the neighborhood plan will follow likely within just a few weeks, and the full process will start. I would expect, optimistically, in twenty-twenty-five, we would be starting, commencing development.
Okay. And starting on the south side and kind of...
The very, the very south end, yes.
Yeah, chasing north, following the gravel extraction process.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, and then amenity-wise, um, obviously, an off-leash dog park is needed, um, but I would also ask um to uh work carefully with our Parks and Recreation Group and see if we can build in as many in community recreation um as possible. For my own lens, I'm not necessarily missing skateboard opportunities, but something else like that. Um, so it's kind of my feedback at this point. Counselor Nagel.
Uh, would you guys like to build less than eight units per acre?
Do I have to answer that one tonight?
You guys are whoever you like, dodge it somehow.
Um, we'll, once we get through the planning, we will go through our numbers exactly, but again, we, sorry, I don't think there's a real need for any four-story buildings. At the most, there will be a three-story townhouse, which might be like um a drive, the garage is on the main floor, you walk up to the main floor and to the bedrooms. That would be really the highest density that we would probably look to achieve here. So mathematically, not sure if that's sub-eight, but we would, we we'll try to keep eight.
Okay, so you don't really want to build less than eight units per acre?
No.
Okay, shucks.
Thank you very much. Uh, I think that is all of the uh questions and commentary uh from our council tonight, so thank you very much from your presentation, and I look forward to seeing you uh next month.
Thank you.
All right, we are now moving on to item five G, which is the Envision Cochrane 2050, uh, which is the Phase Two Engagement Summary, being led by uh Mr. Mark Spence, our senior planner, and uh Rachel Dillon, I believe it is, of O2 Planning and Design.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor and members of council. Uh, tonight, we are pleased to present the Phase Two What We Heard Summary of Envision Cochrane 2050 for your information. With us tonight is a familiar face, uh, we have Rachel Dillon from O2 Planning and Design. Uh, Rachel will be doing some, uh, giving you some key takeaways from what we heard in Phase Two, and then go over some of the project's next steps. And with that, I'll hand it over to Rachel.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you all. It's a pleasure to be here tonight and share the results of Phase Two Engagement. Uh, so like Mark mentioned, I'll just provide a quick refresh to start, and then I'll provide an overview of the engagement and go over next steps. So, here we are in April, and we just finished the engagement in March, and we're now just starting to draft the plan. So, if you remember, at the end of the year last year, we had several discussions with yourselves to talk about uh goals and policy scenarios for mobility, land use, growth, and housing. And that engagement with you was very valuable in framing up the next level of public engagement. We were able to present those to the public, the results of that discussion, and get their feedback for more detail to inform policy. Next up is another bundle of topics, arts and culture, parks and recreation, economic development and design. We engaged with the public to understand their goals and priorities in each of these areas. And we'll come back to you in May to present some scenarios to get your insight and discussion on those. So now diving into the engagement summary. The purpose was threefold. The first, like I mentioned, was to confirm priorities. In the first phase of engagement, we get a lot of ideas and vision and excitement about the future. But as we all know, making a plan requires some tough decisions and making priorities, and it's helpful to present all the options to the public and see what's really most important to them, particularly when it comes to arts and culture, economic vitality, parks and recreation, natural areas and open space. We also presented more detail that resulted from our discussion with yourselves at the end of the year to educate them about, the public about planning and mobility and housing, and to get more detailed feedback on neighborhood centers, development corridors, new downtown and housing to help inform further policy direction. And then we also had a specific question focused on small-town feel. That came up a lot in the first phase, those words verbatim. And we really wanted to dive into what exactly that means, so we could capture that in the plan. Like the first phase, we had a hundred percent reach because we sent a flyer along with a utility bill, and we received websites to the visit over a thousand, as well as other communications and promotional material. We had about six hundred people participate in Phase One and four hundred people participate in Phase Two, so a thousand total contributions so far. So like I mentioned, we had about thirteen hundred website views. We had several social media posts to help spread the word digitally. Through print, we had the utility bill inserts, print advertisements, and then we also, this phase, printed a few hundred business cards and spread those around the community as much as possible. We posted posters around the town and had an outdoor sign. The engagement tactics, again, used the online survey. We reached out to schools and had follow-up emails with community organizations. Like, we wanted to build upon the success of the first phase of engagement, so we had lobby displays again with the Cochrane Public Library, which is particularly popular, the SLS Center, the Ranch House, and the Station. We also reached out to businesses specifically, particularly organizations that represent businesses in town to see if we could help spread the word that way. And then we had three in-person events. We had, and we participated in trivia night at Found Books, and they even let us submit a couple of questions, which was fun. We also attended the State of Cochrane event, and we had, we spent a full Saturday at the SLS Center, talking to people there. So now to go over the highlights. Small-town feel, I'll go into this in a little bit more detail later, but it's really about the social connection between people and, of course, certain physical characteristics. For parks and recreation, there is really a priority on having more gathering spaces in the community to gather sports, as well as a need and a desire for more pathways. Natural areas and open spaces, no surprise here, more pathways, trails, and then a real investment in protecting our sensitive areas and wildlife. For arts and culture, a lot of enthusiasm around community and cultural events, as well as a desire for more venues. Economic vitality, no surprise here as well, a really strong support and a desire for more local businesses and expanding opportunities for local business development. Housing, we heard a lot more about the need for affordability, high-quality design, and really looking at housing with surrounding amenities and seeing what type of environment people are living in, connections to green spaces and the like. When talking about different facets of the built environment, like neighborhood corridors, people really appreciated their convenience. They liked the easy access to shopping services and amenities. Development corridors, so those long streets that have a more commercial focus, people saw them as gateways, but there's an opportunity to maybe make them feel cozier and improve their aesthetics. And with the new downtown, south of the tracks, people really appreciated having a central location for a lot of retail. There's an opportunity to increase housing and gathering spaces there. So I developed a little bit of a key to help highlight where the, what the majority of feedback means. If there's four dotted lines around a dot, it means we have consensus. There isn't really divergent opinions in this area that you'll see on the following slides. Two rings, the majority of people expressed this opinion in the feedback. One ring, this, though they weren't the majority, the largest proportion of responses followed in this line. And then a dot is there's several similar comments, an array of very divergent ideas. So this highlighted an area that we thought was important. So looking at this, the only area we had consensus on was the love of natural areas and open spaces. Naturalizing when possible, having a mix of accessible pathways and naturalized trails, and protecting the environment of Cochrane. That was what we heard over and over again drew a lot of people to the community. Arts and culture, a large proportion of people were speaking about the need for dedicated venues and space for events, like I mentioned before. For parks and recreation, we did hear from the majority of people that it's really about those comfort amenities, benches, washrooms, playgrounds, as well as the need for more sports facilities. And for economic vitality, though it's a large proportion, we heard about the need to protect historic downtown and incentives for local businesses. Now, building off of our discussion with you at the end of last year, neighborhood centers. There was a lot of appreciation for them. People really liked them. And when we heard about what can be done, what they like about them today, or what can be improved in the future, is having them fit in with the aesthetics of the community. In particular, we heard a lot about transitioning from those areas of mixer, mixtures of uses and higher density to the more lower-density parts of the community. A lot of desire for connectivity between and within, so people could access these neighborhood centers very easily through walking or cycling or other modes. And then quite a few ideas of people suggesting central public gathering spaces. They love the concentration of businesses, of course, but if there's public spaces in there as well, they thought that would be a good idea. For development corridors, again, encouraging a variety of mobility options, so they're easy to get to and move along by a wide variety of modes. Some people thought it would be great to emulate the charm of historic downtown and really stretch it along some of these other areas surrounding it, as well as, again, more opportunities to gather. And then supporting a mix of complementary uses in more locations. We heard quite a few different opinions of what the right use mix is on these development corridors. Some people really like the concentration of commercial uses there, and some would like more of a mix, so there was a little bit of divergence there. Looking at the downtown, like I mentioned before, people really appreciate a centralized and convenient location where a lot of different businesses and retail options are located. Some, many actually were looking for expanding upon that and really leveraging that opportunity with more retail options at different scales and housing offerings. And then there was a strong proportion of people that, again, wanted to pull that character from the historic downtown south of the tracks, though some also appreciate a complementary, more contemporary look and feel as well. Looking at housing, of course, a big one is encouraging different housing options and affordability, as well as there's a mix of opinions around concerns with growth, where density should go, how it should spread in the community, and where higher-density housing should go. But there is a prioritization for design and amenity offerings alongside housing and not looking at housing in isolation, but its relationship to its surroundings. And then looking at small-town feel, so informing the vision, what does this mean? So the physical elements that people highlighted was it's very easy to get around. They have easy and convenient access to local businesses, services, and amenities. Many talked about architectural controls and building height as a way to convey that feeling. And then there's also a proportion of people that said, oh, we're no longer a small town, which we heard in the first phase as well. And then, of course, the social elements that we all think of when we think of a small-town feel is knowing and looking out for your neighbors, that sense of safety and opportunities for community gatherings and events. And as you could see from the rest of the feedback, those desires for gathering spaces and neighborhood centers and corridors in the downtown really came up again and again, those opportunities that people could get together. So a small-town feel is definitely a feeling for sure. So in summary, largely agreement on, of course, protecting nature and the natural environment in Cochrane, increasing pathways and trails, and increasing housing options. A little bit more divergence on building height and density, a little bit of debate and different opinions there. Feelings about growth, of course. What access and amenity and public space along the River Valley should look like, how natural versus active should it be? The retail mix and scale, a lot of people like local, small businesses, of course, but some appreciate the convenience of those larger retail developments as well. And then mixed opinion on architectural controls and how far we should go down prescribing a bit of a design aesthetic. So to conclude, I'll go over some next steps. So like I mentioned, the public engagement closed. We have the final What We Heard report, and we'll post that to the website so anyone can take a look and have a read through it. Tonight, we're presenting the results of that, and then we will be coming back in May for scenarios related to arts and culture, parks and recreation, economic vitality, and design. And we're pulling the plan together. And once we do that, we will be engaging with the public for a final time over the summer where everyone will have an opportunity to flip through the plan in its entirety and let us know if there's any final tweaks they'd like to make before we make revisions and take it through the approval process. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your presentation. It's always great to see such a robust public engagement plan. So I will turn it over to my colleagues, Councilor Reed.
Thank you. Thanks for your presentation. I always enjoy the depth of your work that you provided us in terms of our package. I had a comment and then a couple of questions. My comment is that it, I think what's interesting for me about Phase One and Phase Two is that, actually, Phase Two actually makes it more clear in my mind that it kind of reinforces what we, what I believe council has already known in some ways. And it really supports the direction that strategically that we've been going, and so that, for me, is really comforting. It reinforces that principle. So that was my comment. On page two, the second bullet under next steps, it said that the project team will request that council give policy goal direction for topics presented. So that would be the next phase, that you'll be providing us with something and looking then for feedback on those policy issues. Is that it?
Exactly, yeah. We will be following the same approach that we did in late last year, where we'll present different policy scenarios for those topics in May.
Okay. And then on the last page of the report, it says, under leading, the title under leading Phase Three consult considerations. Am I going to understand that the only thing that you're going to do in Phase Three is lobby displays, or is, did I read that wrong?
There will be the three broad tactic categories as well in Phase Three.
Okay.
We'll have an online survey that will provide brief summaries of each section of the plan that people can then respond to. And then we'll also have in-person events as well with panels, as well as paper copies of the plan that people could come and talk to us and provide feedback.
Will there be an online access, or will people be able to respond the way you've done in Phase Two, Phases One and Two?
Absolutely, yes.
And this may be an unfair question, but given our next budget, or given our next agenda item, and given all the hard work that you've done, what's your opinion about where we are in terms of whether we should be a town or a city?
Oh, wow. Oh, that's such a good question. Well, and I found the feedback in this phase particularly enlightening because most people acknowledge that the community is large, like it's a big community and it's growing, and it's only going to get larger. So I think there is a way to retain what people love about the community, whether it's scale of development or connection to green space or ease of mobility and access, that can give that feel while still enabling growth. So you could almost do both if you're really careful about it. How's that for an answer?
You should be a politician. Yeah, my take on it is, without belaboring the point and influencing an extra general item, but my point is that it doesn't seem to be any distinctive advantage to being a city. And I would hate to think that we would lose that small-town feeling simply by changing our name to a city. And so, you know, clearly, I might kind of leave things where they are, let sleeping dogs lie. But thank you, that was a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilor Fidigo.
Yeah, I don't really have any comments. Just, I just want to thank you guys for doing, I think, a great job on the engagement piece, on being out there and reaching as many people as possible. I mean, obviously, we know that engagement can't be done one way through, you know, a phone survey or standing somewhere. It's got to be a collective, like an octopus, of being everywhere and all the time. And sometimes you even still only get a small portion, but I appreciate the tactics that you have used to bring it forward because I think it, it at least gives us a very good picture of what residents are thinking more than just what we see in sometimes social media feeds. So I thank you for that, and I look forward to the next, to the next phase as this goes forward.
Great, thank you.
Okay, well, I don't see any other questions or comments from the group. I just would like to echo that I've certainly noticed and valued your approach to public engagement. It seems very robust, and I certainly appreciate that. As a plan that is going to, you know, listen to our community and kind of select and define the values and principles by which we're going to guide development over the next decades, it's very important that we have that robust public engagement. And so to have a thousand-plus people participating already is a really good sign. So please keep up that work, and I look forward to the next stage of your work. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure engaging with the people of Cochrane. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, previewed by Councilor Reed. Notice of motion, City Status Report. Mr. Brett Hocken, our manager of Legislative Services.
Good evening, members of council. So tonight, in front of you, you can see the report. The original motion talked about the pros and cons of moving to a city. However, as we'll talk about tonight, the pros and cons are subjective. So for example, when we talk about roads, taking over a road could be perceived as a pro because we get control. It could be perceived as a con because it costs money. So rather than laying out a bunch of pros and cons from our perspective, I put down the process of what we would have to do in order to become a city, and then the implications that could arise from it. So moving into that, so the first piece is the process to apply. So first, we would need a motion from council. We'd take that to Minister Municipal Affairs. And then the second piece, which is the largest piece of this entire project, if moved forward, is the public engagement. So it was very clear from the province, if we were wanting to pursue to be a city, that we would need extensive public engagement in many different forms. And for your reference, I put what the city of Beaumont had to do is they are the most recent municipality to move in 2019. So that just helps give you a little bit of reference of the type of public engagement we would have to do. Next, after we do the public engagement, we'd have to give that to the minister. And then, once the minister has reviewed the request, and if they were in favor of us moving to the city, it would then go to their council to be approved by the Lieutenant Governor. So that would be the process for all that to go through. So a rough timeline of what Beaumont had to do was roughly a year, maybe a little more, depending on how much public engagement you need to do, and if the province comes back and says you need to do more. So that's the process side, the implication side of what needs to be considered. So first is the road infrastructure. So ultimately, these are the highways that the provincial currently looks after that run through town. We have two of them, 1A and 22. However, it is not automatically given to the town of Cochrane if we were to become a city. It would become a negotiation with the province if we wanted to take them over. So there's no guarantee that we would get them. There's also no automatic responsibility of them if we were to move to a city. So that's a conversation us as a municipality would have to have with Alberta Transportation. Some other factors to consider is moving to a city does not affect grant funding, as that is purely based off of population. Population is also no longer a determining factor of whether you can become a city. Previously, you needed to have a minimum of 10,000, which isn't really relevant for us anymore at this size. But that also isn't the case anymore. Local roads would become owned by us. So what this means is that right now, if we wanted to do any sort of road closure on a municipal road, we would have to get provincial approval. If we became a city, we no longer would have to get that approval. It's a very rare instance, but... It's a very rare instance, but it would help speed up that process if we did become a city. There is no cost to apply for it and there would be no rebranding costs because luckily whoever made our Manavision Cochrane logo did not put the word "town" in it. So we can get away with keeping the same logo, which actually saves significant amount of costs if you factor in all the signage. And lastly, our CMP costs don't change either as that is based on population and not status. So when, lastly, when we reached out to the two most recent ones, which is Beaumont and Brooks, we asked them why they made their change. And again, it was all for subjective reasons from council at that time. A very common theme was them talking about, we think if we moved from a town to a city, we would bring in more economic development and more investment because people want to invest in cities and not towns. Again, that is not a fact. That is a subjective perception from their council at that time. But yeah, just to give you a little more background. So with that being said, the communication, public engagement, I want to emphasize that this is the, the make or break piece of if we wanted to apply because of how much time, dedication and administrative resources it would take to do the extensive engagement that is required to apply for city. So I'll leave it at that. If you have any questions, please let me know.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Hocken. Counselor Flowers, this was your initiative.
Just curious if any of the communities went to referendum for deciding about whether to be a city or a town?
I would have to look. Actually, I don't know that. I don't know that, no.
Hear anything about that?
Yeah.
And how would it affect our roads in Cochrane, like the ones right in town? Right now, we have to ask for permission to, to close them?
Yes, through the chair, I guess, don't want to throw it to Drew. He can do the specifics on that.
Yeah, so Counselor Flowers, you may recall at the end of downtown, we applied to the province for the closure because they have authority over that portion of the road just right near the Totem Building. So that will be back before council here shortly because I was just in contact with them and they're ready to. We've got ministerial approval on that. But as Mr. Hocken said, again, that would allow us to close roads. So again, we'd still have to go through a public engagement process on any of those applications, but it just wouldn't require us to go to the province.
Thank you. I never thought that we'd want to take over the highways. That would be very expensive, I would think. So the only other question I had was, oh, the 10,000 people. So it doesn't matter anymore? Anybody can ask for city status?
Yes, through the chair, to Counselor Flowers, that is correct. It got changed in 2022. It used to be in the MGA with that requirement. Yeah, it was repealed then.
Oh, and the one question I had when we first brought this up was about the ward system. Did you see any communities our size having wards? I think I know the answer, but I wanted to ask it.
Through the chairs, can, you're asking if communities our size do a ward system? I would have to do more research to give you an educated answer on that.
I did bring it up last time because a few people have asked me about it. I don't think there's anybody our size doing it, but just thought I would ask that. So it seems that there's not a lot of benefits. My main thing was the people asking that we, we had never discussed it. So it would be nice to decide whether we're moving forward or not with it. And I do think myself that there would be an increase in economic development because most of the province thinks we're still a small town and they are quite shocked to find out how big we are. So I think that would, for me, that would be the main difference.
And just to be clear, the decision, this decision will come back to an official council meeting to get a, a decision on that official motion that was made.
All right. You're good. All right. Thank you, Counselor Flowers. Counselor Nagel.
It seems that largely it's a symbolic thing. Is that an oversimplification or is that accurate?
I would agree.
Okay. I, I feel that if we were to do extensive public engagement, going around asking the community if they want to become a city, I think it would be like kicking a hornet's nest over and over and over again. I think, I think the common thread between a lot of what we hear from the community about protecting a small-town feel comes up literally every time we ask people anything, not growing too quickly, not having big apartments up in communities. It, it's like becoming a city, when it's just even a symbolic discussion, I think that it would, it would, it would evoke angry feelings about all that stuff from everybody that they would say we're trying to push it in the direction that they don't want us to take things. So I, I think it would be a mistake to move further with this.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Nagel. Counselor Fedego.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is I appreciate the fact that this came up because I think it just clarifies the discussion out there about, you know, is there any benefit? Is there no benefit? And really what you're saying is that really it's kind of moot, right? Like there might be some benefits, but there could be some other things that aren't really going to matter. And at the end, I think Counselor Nagel's right. Like it's just going to fill, it's going to fill up my inbox, which I don't really need anymore of. And it's probably just going to lead to more annoyance than probably anything. And the other thing is with the economic development piece, I mean, I think the one thing that our community hasn't experienced yet is like a fully functioning grade highway system or transportation system. And I'd rather see that occur first because we actually don't know how many businesses have been deterred, deterred from coming to Cochrane overall due to the fact that they could never get anywhere and they were landlocked. And so I'd like to see once our whole 1A, 22 infrastructure gets finished, what that leads to from an, from an infrastructure or impact when it comes to economic development because I think that might change everybody's opinion. So I just, at this point, I really don't see any need of proceeding, but I think I really do thank Counselor Flowers for bringing this forward. I think it's been good for the community at large to hear all the points and then we can just kind of move on from the discussion.
Good. Thank you very much. Counselor Reed.
Yeah, I too would like to thank Counselor Flowers for bringing this up. I mean, essentially, it was a discussion that's going on in the community. And I think, while Morgan characterized it in a way that I might not have, I think he's right on. I have a son and daughter-in-law who live in Beaumont and my daughter-in-law is a businessperson there. And having had this discussion with her, she said there's been no economic impact in relation to the term moving to city. And again, it may be a little premature in that it only happened, I think, a year ago? Two years ago? But only recently. And, and her take was that it, the community now regrets the fact that they moved to a city status and had wished to remain a town. I think that we attract economic development because we are a town. I think it might actually have a reverse effect in terms of what Beaumont thought they were doing up there. So I'm glad we've had the discussion. I hope that we can leave, leave it as it is. I think someday, hopefully in my lifetime, we will have this discussion or council will have this discussion again. But I think for the time being, I'm quite content to leave it as a town.
Thank you very much. Mayor Janong.
Yeah, not much more to add other than thanking Counselor Flowers. Again, I appreciate the clarity on this and thank you for the report. The one piece that I think potentially we have more work to do on is educating the province. And that, I think, where maybe we, we've been underfunded or under-recognized as a community because of our assumption from decision-makers that we're a certain size. So and, and I, again, I'm not advocating for city status in that. I just, I think the efforts that we would put into becoming a city would probably be more resourceful if we put them into our advocacy efforts, which I think we're doing already anyway. So it just means more work educating the province, but I think we're up to the task in that. And again, more efforts, but thank you, Counselor Flowers, for bringing this forward.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Jong. I don't see any other comments from around the table. For myself, yeah, I do appreciate, as always, knowledge is power. So it was great to kind of get that out there. And yeah, I didn't know that that had been updated last MGA, that there wasn't that 10,000 threshold anymore. So that was the information for me. But overall, my sense of it has always been that whether you call yourself a town or a city, it's all about a marketing or a branding piece. And I think it's really important for our residents when we're branding. And it's also to ourselves and how we feel about each other. So I've always felt strongly in maintaining the brand of a town. But it's always great to get the, the information and data to kind of back up the other discussions around highways and possible economic benefits. When it comes to whether businesses are interested in moving into a certain municipality, sophisticated businesses run high-end marketing research and they're not looking at names, they're looking at numbers. So I don't really see it as a value there. But thank you very much, Mr. Hocken, for your presentation. It was really much appreciated. So thank you very much. And we will move on to...
Pardon me, Deputy Mayor. Just before we move on, I just wanted to confirm a process piece. Mr. Hocken mentioned that this would come back to council. I'm just curious if that's even necessary. There's not really an active question. And based on the conversation I heard from council, that you're satisfied with the information you received. And I'm not sure that we would need to refresh this with some kind of formal, hey, don't do anything kind of resolution in, in the future. I'm, I'm open to both your comments, Mr. Hocken, as well as from council on that.
Counselor Wilson?
I only turned on my light as I didn't give an opinion before. I have no interest in pursuing this further and that's my opinion on coming back to council.
All right. Counselor Flowers?
Having been the person that brought it forward, I'm happy to let it go now that we have the information and we know what we're dealing with. Thank you.
Counselor Fedego.
I feel the same. I don't think it needs to come back.
Mayor Janong.
The same unless Counselor Nagel wants to kick some hornets' nests between now and, over and over.
All right. Counselor Reed.
Put a die right here.
All right. I think that's a clear direction from the group. So thank you very much, team and Mr. Hocken for your presentation on that one. Next up, our final item, item 5J, the Census 2024 Update Report. And that is also you as well.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So tonight, we're going to talk about the current census that's happening right now, about the process timelines, explain the benefits of doing a municipal versus a federal, what we plan on doing with the numbers, the community engagement and, and budget. So for a quick overview, we started this on April 2nd and it's going to go till June 30th. On June 1st, we're going to close the data input portion of the census and start our reports because we have to submit it to the province by the end of June. Currently, as of today, we're currently at 60%. So we're trending in the right direction. So hopefully people can keep getting those numbers in. So what I wanted to touch on specifically was why do a municipal instead of a federal? As that's a very common question we've been getting from the public. But really, the, the main benefit is the delay in information. So first, the federal census only happens once every five years. And after they do their census, there's a two-year delay in us receiving that information. So for example, the, the data that they're going to take this year, we won't actually know what that answers, what the data is until 2026 versus the municipal one, we'll find out end of June. And then for the other four years, the federal census data is based off of formulas built by someone much smarter than myself estimating where we're at. So the good thing about us doing a municipal census this year is we'll be able to compare what that formula puts out because it's beneficial for two reasons. One, it can tell us that it's either way off for a community like us that have had so much growth. Or it can confirm that the formula, formula is actually pretty close, which will then help dictate whether or not we need to do a municipal census every year and possibly save money that way because we can trust that the federal census is within a certain range that council's acceptable with. So those are the, that's kind of the main differentiation between the municipal versus federal. I've talked about what we're, within the report, what we're going to do with the data or how we could possibly use it. But the, the main piece, I want to talk on that is what we're going to be releasing to the public. So we'll be releasing the total population with a breakdown of how many individuals are over the age of 18 or under the age of 18. And then also, we're going to do a summary of each community. So on your, within your package, you have the census zone map, which was the attachment. And we'll be able to actually populate, populate each zone or each area. So we'll be able to understand how many people are in Fireside, how many people are in Glen Eagles, which will then help us make future decisions on planning, schools, all that stuff. So that's where we can see a real beneficial piece to how many people are actually in each area. The communication and, and public engagement piece, we had a bunch of different radio ads that went out as well as the communications team did an excellent job of updating our social media and our website and making sure we stay within those timelines. And then they, they had that excellent idea of getting the public involved with the guessing contest, which we have had an immense engagement from the public, which is awesome to see. So very happy about that. It got people caring about the census, got people understanding about it and, and ultimately doing it. So communications was a very, very big part of this and can't thank them enough. On the financial implication side, so the budget for this was $70,000. Good news, we're trending under budget. We should finish or come in under budget. But the reason I'm bringing this up is I'm planning on bringing back a return on investment report for council to understand whether or not this is something that they'd like to pursue yearly or maybe we only pursue it X amount of years. Maybe we rely on the federal census data, but at least it gives council some information on whether or not they think this is worth the money to do every year or every so ever, however many years they decide to do it. With that being said, that is my report. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Hocken. Few questions already. Counselor Reed.
Thank you for your report. I had, well, I was going to ask a question about the ROI. So that, I'm glad that's coming forward. The other questions I had were I'm, I'm interested in this, I'm really excited about this, by the way. But I'm interested in how it's going to match the envisioned Cochrane 2050 data in terms of their democratic data, to see if, if actually the levels of public engagement we're doing actually translate or vice versa translate to that, that census survey. So that'll be kind of interesting, I think. That'll be, to look at that. I was wondering what the current participation rate was thus far. And it's been out, has it been out a week now or? I know I got it a week ago on the, at my door. So like what, do you know what the rates are right now? Like how you're trending?
Oh, yes. Through the chair, we are currently at 60% complete so far.
Oh, that's excellent. That's excellent. Now, the last question I had was under the financial implications. It said, contract fee with the city of Erdry to rent census software and pads. Shame on Erdry for charging us that. Mayor Janong, you need to talk to your colleague, Peter, and address that. That, that's shameful. Thank you.
Excellent. Counselor Fedego.
Thanks for the info. Have, have, has everybody been provided the census now? I know that I had a follow-up, I think, earlier in the week that I sent to Ms. Dangerfield, kind of clarifying because I heard an apartment complex hadn't been, actually provided the census yet. Has everybody now received the census or are we still working on that?
Through the chair, yes. Yes.
Okay. The only other point that I, I think that you should consider if we do go forward no matter what is to clarify because this is a decision that I was personally affected by is when you're a single parent and you have kids that switch residences half and half in your 50/50 custody. I said my kids live with me, but if my ex says the kids live with him, guess what? You've got double people staying the same population, right? Which is going to skew those numbers. I think you need to perhaps, just for feedback in the future, make it clear as to what living arrangements are if you're in a 50/50 custody. Maybe one person in your family claims children. It's just something that I think, because it's, it is going to affect your numbers if both of those people had said the same thing.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor Janong.
Just one point, and I don't need an answer tonight, but I have had some feedback about number of questions being asked and I get that we're targeting population. Maybe in that ROI report, one of the, I think, benefits that we would have to us in the future is an opportunity to ask our residents certain things. And I don't have a potential or an example of another question at this point, but maybe there is something that we would like an opinion on or could build on. So maybe some color around that in the, in the future.
Through the chair, to Mayor Janong, yes. So through, Erdry is an excellent resource where every other municipality that has done a census, they've created question banks. So you can... So you can see what other municipalities have asked. And so yes, the answer to that is we do have the ability to do that. If we were to get more in-depth, then that would be something that would come back to council for you to direct administration on what type of questions you ask, right? If you leave it right now at the purely population numbers, it's very straightforward. That's what we're doing. But if we want to get more in-depth and try and find out more information, that's something that we would get council to direct exactly what kind of questions you'd like to find out.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not trying to push on that tonight. I understand that ship sailed already this year, but I do think that maybe there is an opportunity in the future. Yeah, thank you.
All right. So when it comes to, like, the point of it is to have, you know, accurate data about our population. One of the reasons in the past that we gathered our own information was to be able to use accurate numbers for grant applications at the provincial and federal. Are we still allowed to use Cochrane's numbers for those applications? Or are we required to rely on the federal census?
Through the chair, that is an excellent question and one I'm trying to find out.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be great to, for me, that'll make a little bit of a difference if we want to, you know, continue with the investment or not. Because if, if we're not allowed to use those numbers, that might change that value on investment piece for me. But certainly my hope, and I know when we first started doing more regular census separate than the federal census, was that as we think that we're growing faster than the census data, we want to be able to use the most accurate numbers to make sure that our grant applications reflect our need more accurately. So it'd be great to get that back. That was my only question on that, but so far, so good.
Before you, sorry, before you go, Councilor Nagel, on that piece, I would, this is an assumption. Again, I'm going to get confirmation on it, but I don't believe the province would take away allowing municipal population and then now bring it back to then not take that information. So my assumption is that, yes, we will be allowed to use it because what's the point of them allowing us to do our own municipal census again if we weren't? But again, I need that, I'm going to be doing research on, do we get to pick and choose depending on if it's for a grant for this or a grant for what, what population? So that's the question that I'm going to be digging in and I'll come back. It'll be part of that ROI report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilor Nagel?
I'd add my two bits. If there's any question as to the value of the census, I think it's super important. I think one of the things that municipal government and our group has vocally criticized about sometimes is whether or not growth is being planned for appropriately. And I think having an accurate census is probably the foundation of appropriate planning for growth to actually know where your population is and know how quickly it's growing. And then, as has been illustrated and explained, it's not just about planning, but also leveraging that information. It's like, look, we are growing this fast, so you do need to start planning schools faster. So this is the beginning of, it's the foundation of planning appropriately for growth. So I think it's an invaluable investment.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Excellent. Well, thank you very much for your presentations tonight, Mr. Hocken. I believe that is wrapping up that agenda item, which is 5J and the final one on our agenda tonight. So thank you very much and we are adjourned.